I'd like to call this meeting to the Town of Rockland Planning Board Order. First order of business, I'd like to welcome Kathy Hammer to our esteemed group, and hope we can have as much fun as we all do. The second order of business is, I believe the agenda scans is posted. We have two public hearings tonight. One on the Sun Common Sherrod Solar Proposal on Wardenburg Road, and the other on Rockledge on Ackertook Road. And we've all read the minutes for December 17th, 2018. We've all had those. Any amendments? Any changes? Could I hear most of your votes?
So many.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I don't... Oh, yes, I do have an announcement. We are confirmed for the planning board to have our training session and short-term rentals, then breakfast, things of that sort. Next is Monday, unfortunately, thank you. From, I believe it is four o'clock to 5:45. Basically, what we're going to be looking at is what are the issues, what are the people doing, what are the options, things of that sort. It's not something that we're going to come up with any decisions. We're just at a point at which people have raised some questions and issues, and we just need to educate ourselves about it. Let's open also the members of the public who would like to attend. We understand that everybody in towns are standing up to see if this is relevant to attend. So, we'll be doing that. Okay, I have exactly one more minute, so I can only first public hearing. And we just have the two items. The zoning law, yes. Good idea. I'm just listening to this at the male end of the board, so I don't have to share it with the female end of the board. We had a couple of zoning amendments that have referred us to the town board. One on affordable housing, and the other one on additional use being added to the stamp property. And as the law requires for town board, if you're doing a zoning amendment, they have to refer it to the planning board. We have 60 days to send back comment. They referred them to us back late November, and given the holidays and whatnot. We really have not had a chance to sit down and discuss these. So, I was thinking, to be able to everyone, if we were to meet on January 22nd, at a time that's convenient for all of us, that's Tuesday. I think the 21st is Martin Luther King Day, so we won't be meeting then. We could take up both of those amendments and discuss them in a workshop session. There is not, you know, public comment, things of that sort, in a workshop session. At the same time, we'd also, you know, over, and perhaps we could complete the seeker review for the Sun Common Sherrod project. So, we have to go through some of the seeker determination. And if we could go to that time, we have a fairly full agenda for our first meeting February 4th. If you would give the chance to do that. Would anyone here be unavailable on the 22nd of January?
What time?
What time of course would you put it? In the early afternoon, later in the morning?
Middle?
Four o'clock? So, there, later?
How long do you expect to run?
Oh, I would hope we'd be done in an hour and a half. I mean, you know, we're just amongst ourselves. What do you disagree to me? Does that sound good, four o'clock on the 22nd? Could I hear a motion to have a workshop on January 22nd at four o'clock?
Is that it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, thank you. We'll be sending you off to give some work, other information on these items, so you're ready to go. All right, that was two and a half minutes.
Thank you.
Did you try to share the same thing? I was just about to forget.
Run, run, I need to run.
I heard that's where it talked about, especially this time of year. Well, we do hope everyone had a very happy new year. The weather hasn't been horrible. We got this building, which we didn't last year. For at least that I felt.
Michael, a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to see what action comes from the training on Monday? Is that me to pay presentations with town board or just training?
Just training. We're asking, we're hoping the town board will come too, because they're the ones who have to make any policy changes, things like that, to the zoning law that they wish to. I think as we keep getting people asking questions about it, what's going on, what is going to happen? Technically, since it's not this did use on our use table, technically it's prohibited. Technically. But it's not something that we must want to prohibit. For a lot of people, it's a very useful thing. We don't want to prohibit it. On the other hand, you know, some people have taken to some of the ground each other. We want to make sure protecting neighbors and residents. Then also, maybe when people use this, it's a very useful way to help, you know, raise a legitimate. We just want to know what's going on, what you can do, what you shouldn't do, but some places what hasn't happened. It's just an information meeting.
I think it could be, I mean, if you're interested in attending and hearing a presentation, certainly, certainly come, because they'll be covering legal issues, enforcement, what's happening in other communities, how it's working, how it's not working, what are the different types of ways of managing it or permitting it. So, I don't think we're expecting at this point to be directional in any way. This is just purely informational.
Would it be filmed? Is it going to be a panel?
I will ask.
It should be.
We like it. We have people from Red Hook and Muydonut also attending. We have other communities who are facing the same sort of issues, and they face it as information, and they can share what they're learning, and, you know, we're there in the process.
And who's doing the training?
It's going to be John Lyons and Jim Edie.
So, we're hoping some of the meetings are going to have kind of a roundtable format. And so, you know, because you guys have, you know, you're sort of, you guys experience...
I'd very much like to be here, but we're going to be away as possible to be, like, timed in.
It would be great for you guys to be able to, you know, give some input.
Yeah, yeah, so Cindy can be here, and if the group doesn't mind, she could have her phone, and I can just...
Oh, absolutely.
Well, and I think if you have other, the owners or operators in your circle of friends that you want to make aware of this, you know, local somebody who might have experienced some issues, you know, Red Hook has had a task force looking at it. So, we're thinking as a community, if all of these northern Dutch municipalities can be talking to each other.
I think it's wise. It's an issue that's facing every municipality on the planet simultaneously. And I think that rather than every little town, and in this case, and village, you know, addressing these issues, there could be, rather than everybody needing to reinvent the wheel, but to have some common sense.
And we understand it's a matter of balance.
Literally, a chance for input from the community before that, so that we know what other issues are...
Well, if people have questions, they want, you know, send them in. We'd be more than happy to let them join us. We obviously don't want all the answers. We want all the questions.
We don't have questions.
Well, I think Jim is correct. I can't remember if Jim's preparing a PowerPoint presentation.
Great, John, we're going to put a PowerPoint together that'll explain what they are, what some of the other municipalities in the state and the region are doing, what's happening naturally, it's just going to be a discussion. And I think we're really hoping that that will start driving some thoughts and conversation amongst the municipalities, and you can talk amongst each other about really what's kind of going on, what your findings are, so that we're trying to have a conversation.
We may be able to make the PowerPoint presentation available post the training session.
Yeah, that should be...
That could easily be put off, so, you know, catch what you can on FaceTime, but maybe we can make the PowerPoint as well.
And we'll see if we can have a tape, so that actually be a tape of the presentations.
Thank you for the PowerPoint. You sent it to the PowerPoint you posted on our town website? Maybe ask...
Wow, let's see if we're ready for our first public hearing. Yes. Sharon is leaving the board, introducing herself to this portion of the students' project. This is the Sun Common Sherrod Subplan Improvement Special Use Project for a solar farm at 55 Wardenburg Road.
Good evening. Hello? This is Ma.
Uh, I think I'm on.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
You sound very loud. My name's Jeff Irish. I'm here for Sun Common, formerly Hudson Solar. We have another public hearing on this project. So, we, since our last meeting, we've updated the plans. We collected a bunch of questions from members of this board, and we provided answers to those, written answers to those two weeks ago. We also received updated questions from the towns of this board's engineer, Bradger Kelsey, and we provided written answers to those. So, I wanted to go through the changes to the plans that answered the questions. There was also some other questions that came up. There was a question that came up, I think, instigated by drainage issues at another community solar system, not ours, but on the other side of the river in the Pacing area. And so, I want to talk about that a little bit, and the drainage study that we've commissioned in response to that. And then also, then, there was finally, in the last week, there were some questions circulating from some members of the planning board regarding the possible toxicity of solar panels, and I wanted to address that. That's an issue I think we already discussed and addressed, but since this has gone on approaching two years, I think it'd be natural if people had maybe forgotten what the answer was. So, we've got that answers, and we can provide some more details. And this is the first time I've used this thing, and I've got the screen. So, I hope this works. Again, so this is the site. I don't think anything changed on the current condition of the site plan, except that we have added... Oh, yeah, a little one above. Okay. We have added two-foot contour lines that were requested by the board's engineer, and utilize those in the drainage study, which I'll talk about later. On this drawing here, oh, that's better, for the sound. Thank you. On this drawing here, we've added a few things. We added a construction entrance that was requested by the board's engineer. The purpose of that is to make sure that for approximately the one week or two weeks, when most of the equipment comes in, that there isn't a lot of mud and things like that that's tracked out under Wardenburg Road. We also added a bend in the access roadway here. Again, that was largely at the board engineer's request. There's an existing culvert there that we were going to upgrade, and he was requesting that the culvert not be relocated, so we kind of swung the road out there to allow for that. We have also increased the leased area to the entire property. And that had been requested and discussed, requested by members of the board and discussed, and so we've gone ahead and done that. The main purpose of that is to give us control over all of the vegetation on the site in order to get... Oops. Never know. In order to ensure the screening, which everybody has indicated is so important here to this project. We've indicated, whoops, this thing is very sensitive, sorry. There's, we've also, whoops. Here, indicate, have a temporary material and storage area that was requested by the engineer, and we've curbed the road, the access path here, so that there is no possible line of sight into the array through the access road from the other property, even though all of this area up here on the neighboring property, the Karate property, is federal wetlands. Okay. On this revision of the drawing, we've made some further changes. We've indicated here the fire department staging location. We have talked to the chief of the Runback Fire Department, and he's familiar with the site, and he's said that the department's firefighting plans would not involve their main trucks going up the hill and up this path, that they would stage everything from here, that they have, it's an adequate-sized area, it's close enough to the array, and the way they fight possible fires, brush fires in areas like this, this would be how they would do it. They still have an access road that they can get up. Apparently, I guess they have some light-duty ATVs or something that can get up if needed on this road, like that. We have added, no, I think that's on the next one. We've added vegetation to the east, but that's on the next drawing. We further highlighted and indicated the condition, the locations of the utility poles, the new ones, there's two of them here that get added. That was at the request of the board's engineer as well. This is just the electrical signage that's required by the National Electrical Code and the New York State Building Code. There were no changes here. So, there were some changes in this area. This is the landscape plan. Again, the details are not legible here, but the board has full-size drawings and also electronic copies, and 11-by-17s that are legible as to what is in here. I'll talk about that in a minute. The major changes that we've made here are, we added taller, a mix of taller bushes, trees rather, of various types that gets detailed in the schedule up here at the recommendation of the landscape architect in order to provide immediate screening from the second, the single second-floor window at this house in the south. There was some concern that if we planted 10-foot-tall trees, it might take a couple of years for them to grow, so we've put in tall enough trees to block that view right off. The other thing we did was we added screening vegetation along the east side of the array here. We have not had any requests for that. There's another house that's about 500 or 600 feet away here through the woods, but there was some requests from board members that there be screening will put down on the east side, so we did that. This area here is also a federal wetland, so there's not really a risk of anybody building anything close to the east side of the array. And there was a lot of talk about the maintenance of the vegetation. That's explained in detail here, and also in the questions and answers that we provided. The maintenance will be done by, of the vegetation will be done by qualified landscape subcontractor, including, as is specified in here, maintaining and watering as needed, the added vegetation to ensure that it gets properly, properly established. The fence that goes around here, we've increased the height to eight feet. There was a member of the planning board who, as we went through our notes, had repeatedly expressed concern over a six-foot-high fence being jumpable by deer, and so we've gone up to eight feet. The fence is also black, coated black as a post in order to make it much less visible. And it's chain link, coated black. The details of all the plantings, the transformer vault, things like that are all indicated on these other drawings, as is the roadway configuration and how that gets built up. Again, we've kept below the, well below the one acre of disturbance so that further planned, further studies are not required regarding the preparation and the management of the construction site. Lighting, there was a question as to what they are. They're basically service lights that are, will look like that, they're kind of jelly jar-type lights. There's an inverter board here, and there's a second inverter board here. Those lights are switched lights, which are there so that if at this time of year when someone was out there doing some service, and the sun goes down early as it does, and they can turn on the lights for service, there will not be motion activated. There's no lighting in the system at all, other than those service lights that are manually switched on and off. Are there any questions from the board about this at this point? Then I'll continue on some of the other matters, other questions that came up. I think it was almost right after our last public hearing, there was an article in the Daily Freeman about a much larger community solar project that, in my opinion, was not so carefully engineered and constructed, and it's causing drainage problems in the area. So, we wanted to get in front of that and address that. We, I have an comparison chart, see if that compares. It shows what some of the key differences are between this project and that project. And then, we also went ahead and commissioned a drainage runoff study that further showed that there's no significant increase in drainage or runoff by this project. So, this one, unfortunately, you don't have on the screen, but I'll just outline it. What we did was we compared some of the key attributes of our project, this project here versus the Blue Stone project, which is the name of the one in Kingston, which is causing some problems. First of all, ours is 2.5 acres. There's 13 acres in size. Our clearing method is, that we're using for the property, is the method that was recommended by Eric Kivya of Casonia. We're going to brush hog the property only. There's going to be no rubbing or pulling out of roots or anything like that. That's good for wildlife. It's also, it turns out, it was a very good recommendation for drainage. The Blue Stone project, on the other hand, was a clear-cut project. They cut everything and grubbed the entire site. They pulled out all of the roots, all of the vegetation, bulldozed the site, leaving the ground barren, and I think that's probably contributing to its water runoff problem. Our site is relatively flat. It has a 1% to 2% maximum slope. That site over on the other side of the river has a 7% slope, which is a much steeper slope, so you're going to get more water running along the surface. And then finally, that site, we talked to the town engineer about that site, and he said that the soil was very barren on the site, and in most of the steel posts that were installed had to be pinned to rock because the soil was so shallow. And again, the difference with our project here is we've done our geotechnical studies, and we're able to get a six-foot-deep penetration of the steel post just into the ground as it exists right now. So, we have, we think a completely different kind of situation here than what they have over in the town of Kingston. We did nevertheless go ahead and commissioned a drainage report. You've received a copy of that, done by a licensed professional engineer, not myself. That's not my field of expertise. And the conclusion there was that there was no impact or negligible impact of this project on the drainage compared to the way it is now. In fact, it's things like you said, you know, in a hundred-year storm, the current drainage would be 28.00 cubic feet per minute, and after this project, it goes up to 28.89. So, it's, those are considered insignificant changes or impacts to the drainage. And again, I think that's because we're brush hogging the property, we're not disturbing the soil, and we're maintaining plants and vegetation both underneath the, underneath the solar panels and around them. Any questions about that drainage report?
Yes. On the Blue Stone project, so they were comparing, I mean, they had this problem between, they had the existing condition, and then they put the solar panels up, and then they had problems. Was, you're saying it was because they did the grubbing? Or because, what aspect of what they did caused the problem?
They clear-cut, first of all, vegetation.
We're clear-cutting too, here, right?
We're brush hogging. They had a, they had a largely a forested area, and so they dramatically changed what they did there. We don't, we don't have a forested area. We have brush. They grubbed it, meaning, I guess they went through like the New York rig, ripped out all of the stumps, all of the roots and everything underneath it. They had very shallow soil conditions, so once they took the roots out, water that now gets into the soil can quickly go through the soil, doesn't get absorbed or hit by the plant, and then starts to run on the surface of the rock. They have a 7% slope in some areas, where we have a 1% to 2%, and their system is about five times the acreage of our system here. So, just got more complex for their drainage, and that's why they're in the situation they're in.
The drainage report is the one dated December 21st? That the one that...
Yes.
So, the prepare of the drainage report didn't really do a cover memo, right? You just provide the data? I mean, there's, is there a section on conclusions or...
Um, maybe that was, maybe it was in this cover email, but it's basically the conclusions you can see from section, comparing section 1.1, the table, to section 1.2, the table. And the first one is the existing peak drainage discharge rates and runoff volumes, and the 1.2, 1-2, is the proposed peak discharge rates after the project's constructed.
If there's a cover email that...
I agree, I think that would be helpful, yeah. Unless you're used to reading...
You know, for a novice...
What page are we looking at for these?
Page one and page three, or page two.
It'd be hard for me personally to interpret all of this data, so if there is a cover memo?
Yeah, no, I, that's, I appreciate that.
So, I mean, if you can interpret it now, are you, is this saying that there is any increase in runoff?
No.
Zero?
Not zero negligible. So, if you compare, for example, a 27.999 cubic feet per second to the same table location on table 1.2, it's 28.89. So, it increases by .90 cubic feet per second, which is roughly about a 3% increase, which is, those aren't the kinds of increases that cause problems.
Jeff, are these, is the increase here just within the area of the solar installation, not over the whole of the 16, whatever acres?
No, he analyzed the entire 16 acres and segmented it into three watershed areas, and that's what's illustrated and detailed in the report. He analyzes the flow from each of the watershed areas in different directions, and he also, in the process of that, demonstrated that the culvert work that we're doing here, that that culvert is sufficiently sized and engineered to handle any of the... that culvert is sufficiently sized and engineered to handle any of the flow.
I think maybe a summary matter of something.
Yeah, I agree, I can understand that. All right, next we had a series of questions from members of the board. One, first question was, would we be using herbicides on the property to clear it? And the answer is no, herbicide cannot be used, we're just doing the brush hogging and stacking. Eric Kiviat recommends that we, prior to brush hogging, that we cut everything we can by hand and we stack it outside the perimeter area as it provides a good habitat for wildlife. So, we'll be doing that, and then brush hogging. There was a question about the pollinators, how will the pollinators be planted inside the area and will we have to bulldoze or plow or anything in order to do that? We're going to be implementing a low impact pollinator implementation, which means basically we're going to distribute the seeds on the ground, rake them in. What'll happen is, what'll come up will be a mixture of natural vegetation that was there before and through the maintenance plan, we'll have to slowly weed out the woody brushes and things like that. It won't be a completely homogenous and beautiful field of flowers maybe, but it will be more natural and it won't require the ground to be heavily disturbed. There was a request for the screening on the east side of the array, and so we've added that. There was a request to use plantings at greater height to the south in the cluster to provide immediate screening from that single window, we're going to be adding that. There was a request to consider using eight foot high fence, so we've changed to an eight foot high fence. That is permitted under the solar zoning law, but it also requires an additional special use permit, so I believe we've submitted the application for that second, now special use permit. We had already paid for a special use permit, I think once upon a time for a berm that we're no longer doing, so maybe we've already got the fee in there for that, I'm not sure, but that is permitted under the solar zoning law to go to eight feet, that's what we did. There was asked about, a question about what is the long-term plan regarding the removal of vines that imperil vegetation either inside the fence or outside the fence? And the answer there is specified in the plan is that the landscape maintenance for the site will be conducted by a qualified landscape contractor. Will water be provided to ensure the health and screening vegetation during the establishment period? The answer is yes, and that's in the schedule that the landscape contractor will be contracted to provide. What's the plan for mowing within and around the array, the frequency, who will do it? Qualified contractor will do it. Going back to Hasonia's study, they recommend it twice a year, once in late March and once after mid-August, and we think that will be sufficient. The answer is twice. And then there were a series of questions regarding the LLC and the transfer of ownership. First question was, what are the implications of the future transfer of ownership of the solar farm to an LLC on maintenance and required screening? The answer will follow, but the LLC will not own this solar farm. Next question was, what is the organizational makeup of the proposed LLC? So, provided this in writing, do you want me to explain that again maybe to the members of the public as well?
I think it would probably be helpful, it was one of the questions that we've been there.
Okay, all right. So, this is an ownership model, community solar project. There's two types permitted by New York State regulations and IRS regulations, ownership and subscription. This is ownership. Under an ownership CSA, members will own solar panels and a share of the associated equipment directly. They'll have a vested interest in the continued maintenance and operation of the site as they would with any personal property, so the solar panels become their personal property. The members of these, of the CSA will be organized under an LLC, which is required by IRS regulations, with the purpose of the LLC being to represent the common interests of the members in the operation and maintenance of the CSA. So, the LLC in many ways will be like, it'll be a membership organization in a way analogous to a condominium association, where the members basically operate it. It's small, its revenue is the dues it collects from the members on an annual basis and then it spends those dues on the maintenance of the array, the purchase of liability and property insurance, payment of the utility, monthly utility fees, and also they pay an operator. A community solar system in New York State like this requires that there be a designated operator and sponsor that's registered as a distributed energy resource provider under New York State Department of Public Service regulations, specifically the CD, what they call their CDG oversight order. Sun Common is a registered provider of these services under that order, and we will be the operator of the site hired by the LLC to do so.
Quick question, the ownership, is it of specific panels each? Does somebody own a specific panel and that one gets damaged and they lose? Or it's a common thing and they all end up paying the replacement charge?
So, there's two questions there. The answer to the first question is yes, they own specific solar panels, write down to the serial number, and we give them a map showing where their solar panels are in the system. If one would get damaged, it would be replaced. If one gets damaged, it really doesn't affect, in a material way, the credits that that person receives on their bill because there's only a single electric utility meter on the system. So, it's measured in aggregates, the effect of having one panel out of 1,600 damaged is negligible. But, as I said in some earlier meetings, this system has module level power electronics on the back of each solar module. We, it has internet monitoring and security monitoring on the system. We can, we can see and measure the production of each solar mat module individually in real time, and if one is damaged and stops producing, we get an email alert, it also shows up on our screen as a, as a black rectangle in a sea of white colored rectangles. So, it's a replacement. Well, that would depend on the cause of the damage. So, if the damage is covered under warranty, then we replace it. We, we have other solar arrays like this that are operating and we stock spare solar modules of the exact same type so that we can replace them quickly with the exact same type and their intent is to be had within 24 hours.
Pre to the owner?
Yes.
Okay, and if it goes beyond the path for replacement?
Sorry.
You say you have some set aside for replacement, but if it goes beyond that, it counts as damage?
We got widespread damage?
But it does a big hailstorm or a great big windstorm?
We, we've been doing this for 15 years. We have approximately 100,000 solar panels that we've installed in the Hudson Valley and the Capitol District. In those 15 years, I think we've had 20 that have been damaged by hail, and all of them were in the hailstorm we had this last year. Remember the one where we had golf ball sized hail up in Melizaville, and similarly down in Orange County? We had about 20 solar panels that were damaged from that. So, I think solar panels are designed to withstand hail impact, that's part of their specification in their UL listing, so they can withstand normal hailstorms, they can withstand golf, baseball sized hail like we got in Melizaville. So, we think that's extremely rare, but the solar panels we're specifying in this system are the same solar panels that we're using in commercial installations and other community solar installations, so there's a commonality of product between all of our systems.
To an extent, but that didn't quite answer the question. If it goes beyond the amount you have?
Then we, then we'd have to purchase new solar panels to replace them.
And that's on Sun Common and not on the owners or?
If it's hail, that would be covered by the property insurance. So, hail is not, is not a warrantable event considered an accident.
And wind is?
We never have wind damage from the system.
Is wind covered in the warranty?
Unusual storms or weather events, unusual weather events are not covered, but the system is engineered to withstand normal wind loads, just like your house, your roof is.
So, if it is damage, it would be considered as unusual weather?
Correct, if it got hit by a tornado.
Right. And again, that would be, that would be top of the insurance?
That's the purpose of the insurance, yes. Okay. So, there was a question about the transfer of, in an early version of the leasing agreement, there was a question about the tenant transferring responsibility of the lease to the LLC. And so, now that we're Sun Common, Sun Common is in the business of managing and operating these community solar systems. We have about 30 that are up and running in Vermont and in New York State, and we've got more in the pipeline that we're developing. We have a department that does this. So, the intent, we provided a copy of the land lease agreement, the intent, we've taken out the wording that we have the unilateral right to transfer the lease to the LLC, but we left in wording that we could transfer it to the LLC at the LLC's request. And that is typically desired by the members because they own a property in it, want to make sure that it's managed and operated properly. They require that protection in the event that we fail to perform our job. They would get to basically fire us as a manager, hire another manager. And there are companies, there are other companies besides ourselves that operate and maintain community solar projects all through up in northeast. So, I think we've addressed, changed the land lease to, I hope, address that concern. And then there was talk about decommissioning, and there was a quest for that, and we provided more detail again on the decommissioning steps. And I can talk about that next if you'd like.
I think that's sort of a brief summary of exactly the discussion.
I have a quick question about the, about the pollinators. It said if it doesn't take the first time, you'll do it again. How many iterations are you limited to for that? I've tried that twice on my property, second time, zero results, first time, zero results, second time, zero results. So, it looks to me like you gotta kill off everything under, you know, on the ground before the new stuff has a chance.
Well, we consulted with Eric Kiviat and Hasonia on that, on the aspect of that. He has reviewed the pollinator mix and has recommended the, the method of us planting it. So, and as I said earlier, it's not, it's not going to look like the perfect field of flowers. It's going to look like a flowering metal that's going to have a mixture of introduced pollinators that are correct for this habitat, as recommended by him, and also other weeds and bushes and small things that just happen to grow in the area. So, on the toxicity question that kind of came up over the last, the last week.
Jeff, I think you were going to give a brief description of the decommissioning and where we went.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So.
Some of the members of the plan were, if they had received a hard copy of the decommission plan, the steps?
That was in the email that was sent along with the revised behind checks and the twenty minutes. Looks like this, along with the, yeah, it was in the email. So, the decommissioning plan, we've come at it in two ways. We, first of all, created a time and materials estimate, number of workers, hours of day, hours per day, and number of days to do each of a series of about 15 steps that are required to take one of these things apart. We're familiar with these steps because we put these things together all the time. We came up with our sequence list of steps and the time and materials to do it. We added that up, including rental equipment, trucking, material to backfill and seed to remove the array. We added that up, we costed it up, and then we compared that cost to guidelines from NYSERDA, the New York State Industry Research and Development Authority, and they, they've published a white paper on decommissioning, and our decommissioning cost came within, I think, 5% or so of what NYSERDA had planned. So, we think we're on, we're on track with the decommissioning. The other thing which may have been confusing in the decommissioning report was, NYSERDA and the industry are now recognizing that there's a scrap value to the material in a system like this. There's a lot of steel, a lot of aluminum, a lot of copper wire, and that those scrap metals have value. So, I had provided an estimate of that, and the value of the scrap metal in the system exceeds by about a factor of two the NYSERDA recommended decommissioning cost. And that's kind of where the industry is and where the New York State is on decommissioning at this point. But, we understand that this town has a law which requires that we provide a bond, so we're prepared to provide a bond for the decommissioning in the amount that we worked out for the amount that NYSERDA recommends that we do for this project.
Jeff, is, does this assume that the glass panels themselves are going to a landfill?
So, it allows for the glass panels either to go to a landfill or to be recycled, and that kind of moves us towards a toxicity question, so we can go there at this point. So, we, I think, maybe it was you Eric, who brought up that question a while ago, it might have even been a year ago or something, and about, you've read some articles or found some articles stating that solar panels contain some toxic or hazardous material. And I answered it the same, I answered it the same way I will now. There are two types of solar panels that are in widespread commercial use. The first type is cadmium telluride, and they're used primarily by a company called First Solar. They're a company based out of the United States, and they are used almost exclusively in the utility, large utility scale solar projects. So, those are the ones that are being deployed across dozens of acres in the southwest and also around the world. Cadmium telluride solar panels do contain hazardous chemicals, and for a long time, First Solar was accruing reserves on their balance sheet for the removal and decommissioning of those. and decommissioning of those because they were so hazardous. Cadmium is a hazardous material. But there's a second type of solar panels, and we're not using cadmium telluride. The second type is crystalline silicon. And crystalline silicon panels are extremely benign, is what I said at the time, that they do not contain hazardous chemicals. Their primary ingredient is crystalline silicon, which is basically what quartz and sand is made of. And so we went to the manufacturer, and we received this information, we received the questions in about the last week, and so we, over the last week, over the New Year's holiday, we went to the manufacturer, REC, of the solar panels, and got a report from them, which I emailed today, we just got it. And it was a, it's a report, and I've given copies to Gretchen and to Mike, but it's a report by a company called Test America Laboratories. And apparently, all solar panels like this that are used in these high-volume applications are getting, are going through these independent third-party tests where they analyze the chemical content of the solar panels, and they analyze and they go through what's called, I think, it's a TCLP, which is a, so it's an EPA qualified leaching study, which is designed to calculate what will leach out of any, I guess they can do it to any construction material, what will leach out of the material when it's exposed and it's in operation and when it's in a landfill, a broken-up and put in a landfill. And it's a 20-page report. It was conducted, it's the same model of solar panels that we're going to be using here. It was conducted in September of 2018. I provided a summary page, I emailed it, which kinda looks like this. Out of 33, I think it was, organic, inorganic, and metallic compounds that they tested for that could create problems in the environment, 31 of them were not detectable by their methods. They were, including cadmium, which was the one that was mentioned so frequently in the article that you sent around. Cadmium is not detectable, it's not used in crystalline silicon solar panels. The only two metals that were detected by the labs were lead and barium, and the quantity was 1.1 parts per million of lead and less than one part per million of barium. That quantity of lead equates to two ounces, less than two ounces of lead in this entire array of solar panels. So we're talking about 80,000 pounds of solar panels that have the potential to leach in a landfill two ounces of lead. So that's, your car lead is 100 times more dangerous and hazardous than the solar panels.
So these panels pass the TCLP?
Yes. Yeah. So. And we provided a copy of that report. So again, the organic, inorganic compounds are not there, and these are the only lead, lead and barium, too, and extremely small quantities. So that's more background to what I answered, I gave, that it may be a little too flippantly, but I hear it done. I think that's about it.
And I think there's one of the things that we're going to ask in the decommissioning plan, is that when the panels are removed, that they are taken to a, I know who will certify at that point in time, a certified recycling facility that has been recognized as capable of properly and safely recycling these materials, disassembling and recycling the material they gather from that.
Yeah, I think that's very reasonable.
Is there a governmental agency in the state that controls your decommissioning and tells you where you can get rid of your decommissioned units? Or is that something that you make that business decision yourself?
I think we would probably be covered by the same DEC and other regulations that prevent you from just dumping your girds by the side of the road.
That's fine. Thank you.
Clarification question on the decommissioning plan. The document that I saw was the cost estimate that you put together. Is that what you're calling the decommissioning plan? Because it seems like the code in NYSERTA has a more detailed plan that talks about restoration of property, whether things are moved and that type of thing. Is that, is that a document you creators haven't seen, or is that something that's been put together before this is completed?
Well, we've provided a list of the steps, the process steps, and I don't, when we say things like, you know, unbolt, remove, and stack the solar modules on skids, I don't know how much more detail you need to give of a process like that. Remove the transformer pad. And at the end, I mean, because we're not disturbing the ground in the first place, we don't have a lot of testing of the ground to do. We're pressing steel posts. If you've seen the posts when they get pushed into the ground, they're basically, they're almost like kind of U-shaped posts with two flanges on them. The operation is so clean, the grass in the middle of the view, which is about this big, is completely undisturbed. And to remove the post, you hit it with a backhoe in ground like this, and then basically pull the thing out. And so what you're leaving is you'll leave a slit like that in the ground. We think there's gonna be some, we pull out the fence posts, we might get something, and we pull out the transformer vault, we'll put some dirt back in, and we'll just let it grow because it's largely, we're not removing the decommissioned.
Yeah, no, I think that was, I think, just in terms of what I was seeing from NYSERTA, it seemed like, I think you have the information available, maybe just putting it all in one document, like when the decommission would be initiated, if it's at the end of the land lease, or if things don't operate for 12 months, something about, you know, making sure there's a timeframe for completion of decommissioning activity, just some of those details that would go into an actual document, this labeled decommissioning plan. So in 15, 20, 30 years, it's all in one place in that document. And NYSERTA, I mean, I can give you a copy of my letter, but it's NYSERTA.
Yeah.
But just essentially putting all that in one place would be helpful.
Also, if you'll see, you're not only removing the panels, but you're recycling them, whatever is public.
Yeah. Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that I understand, you're agreeing, you're agreeable to the idea of adding to your decommissioning plan that the panels will be recycled through some appropriate organization, is that correct?
Yes, you know, in whatever fashion exists 25 years from now, we'll properly dispose of them. Yes.
So other than land?
Yes, well, I'm not sure what's gonna exist in 25 years, but I think there's gonna be a demand for, there's gonna be a business opportunity to process this stuff because, again, the scrap metal value of the system exceeds the decommissioning cost by two times. So I think there's a business opportunity 25 years from now to say, hey, I'll pull this thing over, I'll decommission your system for free if you let me, because you can make money from it.
Well, that's a possibility, but scrap metal goes up and down worse than stock, so.
Okay, any other questions, Ben, just the planning board?
No.
All right, any questions, comments from the public? If you do, you have to come on up, up to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Thanks, Michael, for coming up with the name. Some people are having trouble hearing, so if you could get my microphone.
So I think Jeff actually answered some of the questions I had with the answers he got to the board. However, in recent weeks, Barry Sherod has parked a bright, white, huge trailer right actually where I think Jeff was pointing out the staging area for the buyer department's gonna be, it's like right behind the building on the property. And I know last time before it was decided whether the whole parcel would be leased, you, I believe, said that the only other structures that are gonna be allowed on the whole entire property would be accessory to a solar power plant. And so just initially, and it gets also into the lease, which I'm gonna go through very quickly, what exactly is Barry gonna be allowed to do on this property? Can he use it as a personal parking area for his things?
He's leasing the property to Sun Common for their functions, and the only functions that they're able to place there would be accessory to the solar farm.
And what exactly does that mean?
It means they control the use of the property. There's no other use on the property.
And so if Sun Common, for example, wants to build, I don't know, an office building or park like some trucks there, they have to ask your permission?
No, they can't do that. Unless they can demonstrate that that is accessory functioning and the operation of solar farm, no, that would not be allowed.
Okay. And what you just said, I feel like there's like provisions in this lease that give Barry the right to enter the property and do things with it that are not necessarily what you just said. And so I think an easy fix would be to fix the lease, obviously.
Our attorney will be reviewing the lease to make sure that it does meet the requirements that our zoning law requires, that any lease on the property that's leased for the solar farm is accessory to the solar farm.
Just give him a little help right now. So, one, I think the LLC operating agreement should be submitted, if that's possible. I imagine after two years, there must be some draft of it somewhere. The lease payments, the payment by tenant to owner, it's still blank. I mean, this has to still be a draft and not a final copy of the lease.
Well, the financial information is not anything the planning board has any right to specifically.
Right, but it's still part of the lease.
It would definitely be part of the lease, yes.
Jeff, section four, first line, you have a typo, says 18, 36 months, it's one or the other. In section five, it says that the tenant shall have the right to operate, maintain, or place, enhance, and upgrade the CSA. And so let's say in 10 years, they make a much smaller solar panel, and I don't know, the association members won't want them, are they, do they have to start this whole thing all over again?
My understanding is, since they're basically the site plan, the site plan from us, if we need to change to that site plan, they have to come back and amend the site plan and hope they will reprocess to do so.
So that includes like if they want new, better, and more improved panels?
Yes.
Section 5C, and I can put all this in an email, this helps, but section 5C, it says that tenant and/or their qualified contractors will perform all mowing and other grounds maintenance of the property excluding the CSA site. I don't know if it's because of the pollinators, or if that's the pollinators, or if that's a typo during the term in a manner to a degree such that vegetation of the property. And then it just says, is in tenant's discretion required to maintain adequate screening of the CSA? The term tenant's discretion required to maintain adequate screening of the CSA is confusing because I thought it's not really in their discretion.
Only discretion, I think they're required to maintain the screening no matter what, and they have the ability or the right to decide how's the best way to do that, and if they fail to do that, then they would be in violation of their permit. So the discretion is for them, but we're not gonna go out there and tell them how to mow, or when to mow, or, you know, what size equipment to use.
Okay, I guess I just read that it's in their discretion whether or not to maintain the screening, not in a manner.
No, no, they have to maintain the screening, that's part of the site line approval if it comes to that.
Okay, so maybe there's problems with that paragraph. Then in 5G, it says if owner or their employees, agents, or invitees damage or disturb the licenses, then owner shall share in a reasonable proportion of cost incurred to repair such licenses. Again, it would just be a question of why would the owner, which is Barry, or his employees, be there to damage anything? I mean, it would seem that there should maybe be a provision in this lease that if Barry, the property owner, wants to go and see the property, he has obviously every right to do that, but maybe notice should be required and a reason for that, rather than him just, we've all been here, like Jeff said, for two years, trying to make sure this all goes as well as it possibly can go, if you guys want to approve it, and to have people who aren't in the business of solar power plants going to this property for whatever purpose seems to invite a problem.
Yeah, I imagine that's something we can look at. I'm not really sure.
I mean, he would just have to be required to give written notice to the tenants, like in any normal, like a residential lease, a landlord can't just like go into an apartment building.
No.
Section 5H says all work shall be performed during daylight hours only. I would just ask that we specify what that means, is it like nine to five? Obviously, it changes throughout the year, so in the summer it would be longer required.
Yeah, sometimes the sun sets something like that.
Yeah, I'm thinking a smaller window.
What she's saying is like there should be a time in the evening when they shouldn't be working.
No, if the sun is set.
No, no, it's like in the June 21st, the sun is setting at nine thirty or something, but he was saying like.
So you might have like regular business hours.
Or like, or something to look at, like, okay, they're only gonna, no matter what time of year it is, they're gonna be working from nine to five.
Something along those lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can put that in there, can't we?
Well, we can consider that, but generally speaking, planning boards don't have the ability to regulate the person's operation. Your authority is to regulate the use of the land, not the operation of the business.
But the use of the land, it impringes on the use of the land for the neighbors if they're.
If there are areas where there are onsite impacts for a particular activity, there's some discretion to regulate that, but it has to be bargained out.
Well, so this sentence talks about constructing and maintaining, so perhaps it'd be separated where the constructing is for certain hours. I imagine you guys can do that, can you?
And we do have noise ordinances, of course, because truly, it's tricky, you can make so much noise. So the noise of construction would probably be pretty loud when you're putting the posts in there, and therefore, they will only be able to do it through certain hours.
Well, I think it makes sense, Amanda, as you suggested, I mean, continue to go through these, but send the modeling right, and maybe we can forward them to John and Kim, and as they're reviewing it, they will take all of these into consideration.
Yeah, it just seems like that's opening like the neighbors up to.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is, we're not, I'm not an attorney, I'm gonna try to go with John and him to look at.
Yeah, no, I understand, but it seems like you guys can put yourself in our shoes, that daylight hours is gonna mean, you know, something during one season and another during another.
That's very true.
Then it says tenant, tenants, invitees, and tenants shall have the right to park their vehicles on the property in designated areas during construction, repair, replacement, and/or servicing of the CSA. So right now, where Barry's trailer is parked, there's literally zero screening, like I can see the whole trailer. And my question would be, I know, like, not to bring up more pushes to Jeff, but like, is there gonna be like a designated parking area for whenever there's normal repair, maintenance?
Something like that.
And then is, can that area be somehow screened? Because I'll tell you right now where the trailer is, there's no screening.
That's a good question. I, my understanding along, once again, I'll probably ask John about this, is that the screening is required for the actual installation itself, but not for something to be transitory such as a truck there, you know, repair something or something along those lines, if they need to be there. Say where the people are coming to mow the lawn, they're probably coming with a trailer or something, and, you know, so you put it on the back of it, and then they take it off and go up and mow it and they need it.
Right, and I would agree, like, if the truck's gonna be there for an hour, like, okay, no big deal, but what happens if something serious breaks and it turns into like a longer repair? It's just, that's more what I'm worried about, like a consistent eyesore. And while maybe the law doesn't require screening, I think maybe you guys can still ask for it, or you can't even ask for it.
We'll have to look at what, this hasn't been raised before, we'll have to look at.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is the first time we're having a hearing of the lease, so. So I get what Jeff's saying about the transfer of the lease to the association, however, I don't believe that paragraph 6A includes that. So it just says that at the association's request, tenant shall have the right to assign or transfer rights under this lease. It doesn't say like for cause or if the tenant is being negligent in some way, and since the association includes the owner and. And since the association includes the owner and the tenant, and I don't think it's been discussed, like, how, is it like if you own a certain number of shares and, you know, like the majority of shares wins and then you have to assign the lease? Um, it just seems that this should be clearer to make sure that it's just in the case where Sun Common is derelict in its duty somehow, I think. Um, also it says something about assuming, the association would assume all tenants' obligations they're under, and tenant would guarantee all those obligations, but the next sentence says that tenant will be relieved of all obligations pursuant to the lease. So that, to me, doesn't make much sense. Um, let's see. It also in that situation has connection with any assignment, a manager for the association must be agreed upon as satisfactory in all respects to the owner. I guess I just didn't understand why the owner would have to approve the manager.
I think the owner would be, at that point, the LLC.
Wouldn't, I guess, wouldn't it be called the association?
Or the association, I think that may be just a, I think it's referring to the same thing, I think.
Okay, well, owner's defined as Barry. So again, like I think.
All the land, the property.
Yeah.
But, but not of the solar panels or not of the, not of the equipment, which are basically the members of the LLC or basically the owners of the solar.
The members of the LLC are defined as part of the association. This is saying that if the lease is assigned, then Barry, the owner, has to approve of the manager. And my only question was like, why, shouldn't it be everyone approves it? I mean, I don't know, some, some sense about.
I don't know why Barry would have any say whatsoever in the selection of the manager.
Okay, again, it's just like, again, I think like there's just things that need to be cleaned up in here.
Yeah.
Um, for the insurance, I just had a question about what the amount of the policy would be, whether the LLC will have any insurance or be added to the policy. Um, let's see. Section twelve, we brought this up a while ago. Um, this is about the hazardous substances. Barry has already admitted to, to a nearby neighbor that there's like cleanup that he wasn't going to do on the property due to hazardous substances. So again, it's up to him if he wants to say what's in that paragraph. Um, then in section fourteen A, it says owner shall have access to the property and the site, but shall not take any action and interfere with the safe operation or maintenance of the CSA. And that just goes back to what I was talking about before, like, why would that even need to happen? And it should probably say something like beyond safe operation or maintenance, like he, I mean, if he can't really do anything on the property, then, I mean, it seems like he should just be there to inspect that they're doing a good job or something. So one thing that hasn't been in this lease before is this provision that the customers and members will have the right to visit and inspect the CSA, again, during daylight hours, twice per calendar year for twenty-five years. And I don't understand why that's there. First of all, I think at some point Jeff said this, this plant could maybe power a hundred homes. I mean, is that at least a hundred people showing up? Where are they going to park? What's going to happen? Why is this even, I mean, I, I thought one solution, I thought Jeff said maybe there's going to be video monitoring the site. Can he give them access to the video feed twice a year?
I, I don't know.
Okay, but what can we do about this?
I think that needs to be looked at because I think if someone was.
The two delinquents, the two owners.
It's, it's paragraph.
It's out of our range, as far as I'm concerned. That's between the two people that have a business agreement. We're, we're delving into somebody's business agreement that maybe we're going to.
Okay, but this was.
We're going to take a look at that. We're still reviewing the lease. We're going to take a look at the lease. There are things that are within the planning board's authority to be able to require. There are other things that are not, we'll have to make.
Okay, but this was sold to us as like a low impact. We go there twice a year to mow. And now it's turning in not only to like twice a year mowing and maybe maintenance and repairs, now it's turning into like potentially what, a hundred people showing up to inspect their panels?
I, I, I see where we're coming from. I see where, well, they all went and had a quick look up there.
Like twice a year for twenty-five years? That's a lot.
I, I think I understand what you're saying, where someone who called me, you know, two people came up at a time, something like that, that's one thing that I agree with. Yeah, you could have some parking issues because we don't have any parking facilities. There's one, well, the entranceway up into the place, and the staging area for the fire department. And there are, and the provisions on the site plans that currently exist for parking visitors to the site.
And it was, again, sold, built as like low impact, the best neighbor you'll, you'll ever have. And none of our neighbors have a hundred people coming to their homes twice a year.
That's something as, I think John will be reviewing that, because there are things that the planning board would do handout.
Okay, and again, the daylight hours thing.
Yes.
That could be like nine o'clock at night during summer.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
You're getting email requests for it.
Yes, without cancel.
Yes, very.
Um, so again, just paragraph fourteen D, it's, it's taught, it's basically implying that the owners allowed use of the property, and it's saying like, again, things that he shouldn't do. Um, so I think that's just another paragraph that either can be deleted or someone clarifies that he's not doing anything there. Um, but that's it. And Jacqueline has the flu, so I'm sure she would want to talk about the drainage issues.
Thank you. Anyone else that has something to say in the seat?
I have Dave Flipon, Beaufort, Berg Road. Uh, a few questions. Thank you for putting us first on the agenda after the last meeting. Also appreciate the full lease of the land. That's a positive sign for us. I think that's something that we've been looking forward to, and that's a good, a good thing. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about, since terrific, and Jeff's provided a lot of great information on the inside, uh, some reminders about the outside, about where this is placed, so I wanted to bring up a few points. From the, um, from the planning board concerns, the fact that Sun Common is, is potentially, I'm going to see what the state is, um, is, does the tenant tend to transfer the land lease to the LLC, intends to operate the CSA as part of its normal ongoing operations? Just want to remind board, this is a little bit of creep, that initially this was supposed to be a Rhinebeck, um, business, when it was Hudson Solar or Rhinebeck residences, uh, and residents. And so this is one step closer to an out of state operator for central Hudson customers. I just want to point that out as consideration. Uh, one of the other questions, I think there was a, it ignored the consideration for a review after one year, that the, the special partner requires a review after three years. I think it's still worth reviewing after one year, especially considering the visual screening that's included. I just wanted to bring that up, that wasn't discussed earlier. Uh, the bond, um, I did look up, I think there's a section I saw in old solar law, there is a requirement in bond, I mean, sorry, a requirement in the law for a bond to be issued for decommissioning. That is, I don't know if you have confirmation on that, I just wanted to check for. I have, section I nineteen D there. And while you're looking at, what that goes with is, um, does the decommissioning plan kick in if the LLC fails? And probably a bigger question is, what if the LLC fails or decides to not continue to operate? Is this an opportunity now for Sun Common to take over? Is that a good thing or a bad thing? Or does the decommissioning plan kick in automatically? I guess, I guess there are a few questions. Um, I had I nineteen D. Again, it was an old law. Just, and the point is to confirm that there is a requirement.
I know that Jeff already said that we would provide.
Okay, that, that's good enough, as long as it's, there is some kind of binding.
Okay, yes. Under nineteen, uh, B four, the planning board shall have conditional approval of the building. As a conditional approval, require the postman to remove a bond in an amount adequate to abide from removal of the solar powered plant or solar farm structures and equipment and for restoration of the site.
Okay, these, that's I nineteen.
It is in, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
And it is required, it's not a requirement.
Required, excellent. Thank you. So, so the question of the LLC failing, the two questions, does the decommissioning plan kick in automatically? Uh, I think, given the scrap estimate, there should be funding for it. One is, does it kick in automatically? Or secondly, is there an opportunity, good or bad, for Sun Common to take over this plant?
That's a good question, and I, I don't know. The LLC, basically, they're the owners of the panels themselves. Uh, I guess the only root I could see to failure is if the, you know, panels stop working and they stop paying their annual fees to pay for liability, insurance, maintenance, and things of that sort.
Is there a financial burden if, if people, you know, decide to leave for a period of time, something's a potential financial burden to take into?
That's.
And we could, we can discuss a possibility of setting, uh, a time numbers that the facility's not operable for a certain period of time, that we can set a horizon for the decommissioning plan to, uh, for the obligation to take it back.
And the, the, part of the question is, is would that be a reform? Because I would imagine that Sun Common could take it over and own it and operate it. Not that that's necessarily a good thing, but isn't that something that could come up given circumstances?
Well, Sun Common, as long as they're, you know, properly, I guess, registered operator for solar farms, assuming the LLC, for some reason, they no longer are willing to, you know, pay the freight for the liability, all the different, the cost of maintaining and operating the system, that held that, um, either the operator, be it Sun Common or someone else, would probably have to have that obligation on them to continue it, or to agree that the thing has failed and therefore the decommission plan would have to kick right in, and then that would have, those steps would have to take place, and the bond may not have to be used to make sure that stuff's done properly.
So is that, is there any, I don't think there's any consideration if this happens? Does it need to go one way or another, or is it, is it being sort of left to that situation where suddenly it becomes an entirely Sun Common owned and operated, um, you know, energy production plant?
Well, it's starting out that way now. I would assume for it to become Sun Common's property, they would have to go through some process of filing court cases against the owners of the different panels to try and, you know, you know, get ownership. So like, you know, you want to get a car and somebody lost a title, you have to go through the New York State DMV and go through a process to prove it's not stolen, except it before they'll give you the title to that vehicle. And I assume there's some legal process they would have to do to get ownership, since they would have sold the panels, pretty much the LLC, they were no longer owning, they were operating, but they would not own it.
Okay, so I, I guess the question is, would there be a requirement that it would go to decommissioning at that point if the, if there was an LLC failure? Should there be, or should, or is it just, it's not defined?
That's a, that's a good legal question that I'm certainly not qualified to answer, so.
Well, I think we'll look at that. We'll have to figure out what the risk rate should be, whether not operating the plant. Is it, you have to pick something that's objective and that also can be verified in order to begin the start of clock, so. But I understand the concept, and I think it's something.
I, I think my understanding of, of the way it's done, if you own, say, ten panels, you could sell them to someone else, or if they wish to buy them, so, just, you know, something of that sort.
Right, because if it falls on that, they would be up for sale.
Right, and, yes, something along those lines.
And with, with the bump, with, what the bond is really doing is, is providing funds that are going to be available to the town, that if for some reason whoever's operating the plant or in control of the plant is not fulfilling the obligations for decommissioning, the town has the needs to accomplish that.
Right.
And it'll be given as part of those agreements, the authority to enter upon the property and use that money and to accomplish the agreement.
Okay, right, if it's in advance, it would also be, yeah, correct. Uh, scrap estimate is, good, is, the question just to come up before, I honestly don't recall, is there any benefit to the town of Rhinebeck in the placement of the solar plant in, in the town? In other words, in credit subsidies or funding? I don't know if that was.
I, not to my knowledge, no.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to make sure about that. Um, another issue came up was, um, with screening to the north, there's been a lot of work for screening, obviously on the east side was a great, or higher home, which is good, um, greater screening to the south. One issue, I brought it, I brought it up probably a year ago, so screening to the north, there's, there's, there's some screening, there's six to eight foot, um, bushes here, but there's a, you know, Phil Karate, it's a pending home site, and he's obviously angry about this situation. And the question I put up before was, well, what, what's, what, what happens when you go to the house? And I think the answer is, deal with it at that point, you can't deal with it now. But thinking about it, my concern is that, you know, he's, uh, this solar plant gets through and goes in, it puts him, you know, an angry neighbor in the, in the seat of putting a house in any location, it's just a couple hundred feet away, there's a limited amount of contour drop here and contour rise, and six to eight feet, you're talking about a home that could be, you know, twenty-five feet high, the panels are seven to fourteen feet high. Um, the screening that's required for something of that nature is something that seems to be worth considering. Um, you're talking about, you know, twenty feet, twenty feet to the top of the tree, so you're not talking about a twenty-foot tree, you're talking about thirty to forty-foot tree, thirty, forty-foot trees to, to purchase those and purchase plant and water them is, you know, you're getting into the, for a tree, one tree, we've had it done ourselves, we have a, we have a tree mover who's done hundred thousand dollar trees, I mean, they're obviously massive specimen trees, but for that size, you're talking ten thousand dollars for two maybe, and you're talking about potentially for the home site, not in federal ordinance, but in this area, it's a similar screening, you're talking about a hundred thousand plus dollars, and that, one of the questions is, where is that, you know, who absorbs that extent? If you have a neighbor that's deliberately looking to try and be adversarial and try to place a home in, in full view, you know, does that, does the LLC absorb a cost like that?
Um, I, I don't know if they would. At this point, if the special court and the site plan is approved on the existing conditions now, they're able to assess, you know, you don't know. I mean, anyone could build something different on the number of these properties, we've seen it throughout Rhinebeck, people buy some of the smaller houses, they tear it down, and the next thing you have is a three, four thousand square feet of house, uh, with all sorts of tall things, maybe going up to the town, height and width thirty-five feet. There's no way that you could know in advance from office, something like that is likely to happen, which one would happen? And it, you know, it does happen quite frequently. So it's just not something we could, they could do without because we don't, you know.
Okay, um, okay, understood. The, the other thing that goes with that is, um, you know, should, should something like that happen, replacement of a home with view of the panels, and if no action gets taken, or limited action, or something that's not satisfying to the neighbor, you know, we have a, I mean, man can save from zero to ten, what's the likelihood that Phil would sue the town? And, you know, Barry Sherrod and Sun Common and the LLC, it's probably a likely situation. Not that anybody hopes that it should happen, but it is a concern. And I think that the point here is that, say, it's a risk. And the, the point that I'm bringing up is, this is part of the risk of placing a power generating plant in a rural residential area, and this is one situation that has been considered, and it's not necessarily a friendly one. So that's, I just wanted to highlight that, I sort of have a statement, brings, um, you know, brings to question some of the zoning choices and the granularity. Obviously, we're coming to the planning board to consider this, but it's a, you know, we're in a, we're zoned rural countryside, but because we're in the hamlet of Wurdenberg, and there are quite a few residences, and, you know, the neighbors are here to, to bring that up, that we're a neighborhood, and again, to remind everybody, this is a budding two historic properties in a hamlet that's going to be considered for a critical environmental area. Um, so the placement of it and the consideration that it's, it's really field to field with a neighborhood who could potentially build a house is a risk, and it brings up, you know, it kind of highlights the fact that this is an awkward or a, a, what's the way to put it, kind of a, a, a bad interface is the way I put it. So, and it also highlights, you know, an awful lot of the work that's been done to try to make this happen, and the question as to whether it should be in a situation like this. So I just wanted to highlight those, those considerations. I don't know if any actions, any mitigation could be done. It sounds like in the meantime, it's going to be left to the future, but if I was in the LLC, I'd want to know about that risk ahead of time before buying into a situation like this. And it's a, it's a clear situation that it's not a neighborhood who's. And it's a clear situation, that it's not a neighborhood who is preferring the situation to be, the panels to be there. So that, again, it's a risk. And I do want to point out, you know, other solar laws, Beak and Newburgh, which are not too far away, they specifically state that their zoning for solar farms do not be in residential areas, they're specifically for industrial and business areas. At Brookhaven, where I'm from, same thing, business and industrial only. And the, I think, to sort of balance this out, again, rural countryside doesn't, we are RC five, but that's not granular enough to distinguish between, I think, what it implies, that there are properties that are naturally screened versus properties that are open space like this in a more residential area. So RC five, while it seems to be an appropriate use for power generating plants, there are questions in a situation like this, that I'm obviously going through the, going through the long process to try and vet that out, but it does highlight, again, the awkwardness of this location. And I think, I know, I see that, for example, on Morton Road, there's a zoning RL five, residential low density, it's not countryside, but residential, we are, basically, this is a budding the Hamlet of Wardenburg that's based around the church. And also, I see it still where they have, you know, alternative energy overlay district, and we're well past the point of this, but it's another consideration where there would be some type of consideration for what's appropriate countryside versus not. And I just wanted to bring those points up and have them considered.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else tonight? They want to be continuing the public hearing, February fourth is the next, is the next meeting. Anyone else have any other questions for this evening?
I do have a question about this process. My name is Cheryl Griffith. I'm not going to reiterate my arguments in favor of this project, as I've said my piece several times during the last year, so I hope you all remember it. But you're now, you're continuing the hearing again next month. Is that likely to be the last hearing?
We are planning, we have a workshop that we're going to have on the twenty-second of this month, we're going to try and finalize secret determination of significance on the project, whether or not it requires further review under CIGO, or whether or not we have all the information we likely to get, we can come to a determination. If it even come to a determination that that is appropriate, then we would be in a position to close the public hearing at that next meeting.
Okay, and you think you'll have time by then to sort it out, all the legal questions and the lease and everything?
Yes, sincerely hope our attorney will have that all ready to go.
We absolutely depend on it. We'll never fix it.
He's really glad he came tonight.
All right, thank you.
All right. Can I bring motion controls? Control, good off the bat. We'll continue this public hearing until February fourth.
The twenty-second?
Halfway up there, huh?
What time do you want to do it?
Do you want to?
Are there any applications or commitments?
Do you want to do it at like seven? Seven? And then we can vote any other procedural application we can have doing before that. Seven, hot second. I'm in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you all very much. We're going to do a little, couple minute recess, who knows who don't wish to stay for the next hour. Part of the program.
See if I can find a seat where I don't get roasted by that heater.
If everyone could take their sheets and, well, it's going, I'd like everyone home for late dinner. She put talking, I can tell she's good at talking. Okay, we're ready for our second and our final public hearing for this evening, Rock Wedge, which is four ninety-two, after the road site plan approval, so to your current amendment, and Edna has accused herself of sitting in the chief's seat. Oh, and Sharon, and Sharon has returned.
Good evening, Mark Krzyzewski here, along with Matthew Rudicoff and George Rodenhausen.
Can you move closer to the mic and film the subject in the background?
Do you have any more to add?
No.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mark Krzyzewski, George Rodenhausen, and Matthew Rudicoff here representing, excuse me, Hudson Valley Ryan Beck LLC with regard to the Rock Wedge project. In continuing from our, the last time we were in front of the board, we made a presentation for revision to this application, and that revision included elimination of the Country Inn as part of this project's application, with the elimination of the Country Inn being replaced with two additional parcels that are being created on the property through the adaptive reuse section of the code, in order to allow, sorry, allow for the adaptive or the use of some of the historic buildings that are located on the property. And with those two additional lots that are being created, those will be used for condominium units as part of the projects. And now the project has been revised to only include condominium units. So originally, the original project that was presented to this board, as I said before, with the Country Inn, it was a twelve roofed Country Inn with twenty-eight units, there are now twenty-eight units, will still reside on the larger parcel, which is, as you can see, this is lot number three through here, those are still with twenty-eight units, and then two additional lots were created here and here, and that, those will have four units per each lot, which is allowed by zoning and allowed under the section of the zoning code with regard to adaptive reuse. So the total number of units will be twenty-eight and eight, or thirty-six condominium units. Infrastructure at this has been also revised to actually decreasing some of the infrastructure roadways. Also associated with that will be some drainage and grading, and some of the water and sewer infrastructure will be decreased in order to, excuse me, associated with this revised application. Also here tonight, as I mentioned, is Matt Rudicoff, Matt's going to speak to some of the environmental and traffic issues.
Thank you, Mark. Matthew Rudicoff, the environmental planner on the project, and undertook the original zoning analysis and the environmental review. And the project, as Mark said, complies with the town's ordinances. It complies with zoning, with the uses, with open space requirements, with coverage requirements, with setbacks, with the clustering provisions, and with the adaptive reuse provisions of the ordinance, which Ryan Beck has been so astute in including. The property is a national registered historic district, and its importance, as clearly stated in the ordinance, is of an impact to the town, it's actually broader than the immediate vicinity, because of it being on the national register, and we're very pleased to be able to provide an adaptive reuse, which really is going to fit with what the community's prior concerns were. Along with some of those prior concerns, of course, has to do with the visual impact of this project, and so just highlighting some of the aspects of this project, no new structures will be visible from Ackertook Road. The only structures that will be visible from Ackertook Road are the existing gatehouse, the existing chapel, and the existing dormitory, dormitory building. All of the buildings are clustered as part of the provisions, and as part of that clustering, actually no new structure will be closer than four hundred and fifty feet from a residence on Troy, Troy Drive, and further to the south, no new structure will be closer than, between four hundred and fifty and six hundred and fifty feet to the other residences in the Primrose Hill Road vicinity. Also crucial to neighborhood impact is traffic. And initially, when the project was submitted with other iterations, a full traffic study was done by Creighton Manning engineers, and the traffic study has been updated to reflect the changes in the zone, so, excuse me, changes in the project proposal. So in the newest submission to the town, which is available to the public, the assessment of the traffic included that there now would be forty trips in the PM peak hour. And because it's a vacation project, a residential weekend project, the peak hour is only on a Friday afternoon. Most residential projects would have peak hours every morning and every afternoon, except Saturday or Sunday. But because this is a vacation project, the only peak hour is in Friday afternoons, and with that level of traffic, which is forty trips in that peak hour timeframe, there is no change to the level of service of any of the intersections in the vicinity of the project. One of the things that's most crucial about the traffic, in fact, of course, in addition to safety, is when you're driving, what is the waiting time at the intersection? And the, no change in level of service is simple, because they're rural roads with low volumes, three to four to five hundred trips per day, which is considered by the Ashdo engineers to be on rural levels of traffic. So within that context, if there's no change in level of service, there could still be changes in other aspects, like how long someone might have to wait at an intersection before they go in. So it was very encouraging that we, that the results of the study also indicated that the largest change in waiting time was point one second, so a tenth of a second, so there's virtually no change in what a driver will experience when they're coming out of their cul-de-sac or out of their service road onto Ackertook Road, Ackertook Road, the other major road. So that was a very important consideration in the analysis and an assessment of the impact of the project. Additionally, we performed a very detailed habitat assessment, which was to establish the existing conditions concerning all of the flora and fauna resources of the site, and the water resources as well. And ninety-nine percent of all of the development is outside of any areas of impact to any of the identified resources. The most significant resources identified are on the project's north side, a button bush, pool, shrub, scrub environment, which is a very rare and important feature, a natural feature. And we're not within five hundred and fifty feet of that, we're further than five hundred and fifty feet, which is within the recommended distance. It's beyond the regulated or required distance, it's with a, the biodiversity study of the town established these recommended distances. Additionally, we're five hundred feet from the intermittent woodland pool, which is to the southern end of the site, which again is further than the regulated requirement, but is a recommended distance in terms of absolutely establishing the lack of any impact. Additionally, we're more than two hundred feet from any of the stream or wetland corridors. Of the project's fifteen acres of wetland, we're only disturbing zero point eight acres, so less than a tenth, less than a tenth of an acre. Mark is going to touch on where we are with the water supply and the sewer supply, and George will touch on where we are with the Dutch County Water and Waste Water Authority. And I just wanted to indicate that we're here to answer questions. We've received the previous questions from the public, which addressed primarily the interaction between the prior use of the Country Inn and the residential component of the project. So those questions are all answered by virtue of us no longer proposing the Country Inn, and the remaining questions that have been raised are in fact traffic questions. In fact, we received a call from one of the residents, Mr. Weiner, and, thank you, Mr. Weiner, and we had communicated with the town that we would like those questions to come through the planning board and then to us, as the other questions have. So we wanted to make that point. But then there were questions about landscaping and the visual impacts, which I touched on briefly. And when I talked about those distances from the new structures to the existing homes, that distance is covered by natural woods, which of course will all be undisturbed and untouched, so that's a substantial buffer. And then also, that doesn't take into consideration the landscaping that would be done around each of the seven new residential clusters. And that level of detail will be coming in our next submission, and those landscape treatments that are immediately around the buildings, obviously will play a major role for many of the more distant viewpoints. So with, also some questions raised about the water and sewer, which Mark will address, and there was some suggested special use permit provisions, which of course the board will forward to us as they continue to review with that. So with that, I would turn it over to Mark, and then of course, where we plan to go.
Can I have a couple of clarifications? You mentioned that no new structures will be visible from Ackertook Road. That structure, the very close Ackertook Road, that you're going to put an extension on, in Gatehouse or College, that's what you call it?
But that's the existing chapel.
Yeah, but you're going to put an extension on that, so that's a new build, and that clearly is visible from the road.
But we don't sustain that with the existing chapel, it isn't a new structure.
Just to make a correction, that no housing will be visible from Ackertook Road, that's correction. That will be visible. So I'm kind of interested in the structure, what's it going to look like? Is it going to be a stone structure, and you're going to extend it? Is it going to be wood structure, castor stone structure? Is that visible from Ackertook Road?
That's clearly an important question.
The planning board will be asking for elevations of the different buildings, the different structures, we just haven't gotten to that part of the.
Okay, fair enough.
But at this point, we have a footprint.
We will be asking, so we'll still have.
Right, on this plan, there's a footprint of the existing structure as it's extended. The second point, you mentioned vacation homes, these aren't just vacation homes, right, they're prime home, they can live whenever they want.
Right, as with any home.
There's nothing mandatory.
But they, no, absolutely correct, but the design of them and the amenitization of them and the pricing structure then is intended.
I just want to be clear, you're making it sound like they're not always going to be there except for weekends, that's not true. There'll be traffic there during the week. You probably mind the traffic, but again, just a correction of your statement, that's
And there was some suggested special use permit provisions, which of course the board will forward to us as they continue to review that. So, with that, I would turn it over to Mark, and then of course, where we plan to go.
Can I have a couple of clarifications? You mentioned that no new structures will be visible from Ackled Hook Road. That structure, the very close to Ackled Hook Road, that you're going to put an extension on, in the gatehouse or college, that's what you call it?
But that's the existing chapel.
Yeah, but you're going to put an extension on that.
Correct.
So, that's a new build, and that clearly is visible from the road.
But that, we don't sustain that with the existing chapel, it isn't a new structure.
Just to make a correction, that no housing will be visible from Ackled Hook Road. That's correction. That will be visible. So, I'm kind of interested in the structure, what's it going to look like? Is it going to be a stone structure, and you're going to extend it? Is it going to be wood structure, castle stone structure? Is that visible from Ackled Hook?
That's clearly an important question.
The planning board will be asking for elevations of the different buildings, the different structures. We just haven't gotten to that part of the...
Okay, fair enough.
But at this point, we have a footprint.
They will be asking, so it's still, we have...
Okay, fine, I'll do that.
Right, on this plan, there's a footprint of the existing structure as it's existing.
The second one, you mentioned vacation homes. These aren't just vacation homes, right? They're prime homes, they can live whenever they want.
Right, as with any home.
There's nothing mandatory.
But they, no, absolutely correct, but the design of them, and the amenitization of them, and the pricing structure of them is intended for...
I just want to be clear, you're making it sound like they're not always going to be there except for weekends, that's not true. There'll be traffic there during the week. You probably mind the traffic, but again, just a correction of your statement, that says it's vacation homes, guys, don't worry, not a lot of traffic.
But the proposal is for vacation homes.
Yeah, that's fine. I think the possibility here is obviously some people may actually want these as retirement homes and things like that, which I think is the point that's being raised. And so, I think it's probably fair to consider, I don't want to call it the worst-case scenario, but it's ideal, but what if, you know, these people actually decide to leave up here? And, as we have in the gardens right now, great many of those are people who moved in there, they lived in, before they're coming in, they're retired, or things of that sort. Or they, you know, do work in the city, they move down to the city two days a week, and you know, spend the other five days up here in Ryanbeck. I mean, it's not, it's not an inconceivable situation. And I think that the concern here is that, from a residential standpoint, which could happen, particularly if the project is quite successful, I think we need to be positive. In fact, yes indeed, there could be people coming up more often than just on a Friday and, you know, definitely not on a Sunday. I think that's reasonable.
That's certainly correct, and the traffic engineers have indicated that, were the development to be full-time residential, there certainly would be traffic during the week. But none of them would be greater than the peak hour Friday at the vacation home. But the peak hour, where the traffic impact analysis is done, would still be Friday afternoon, would still be the highest volume of traffic, even when people are there occasionally during the week.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Actually, what I'm going to ask is people that go up to the microphone.
Isn't that after presentation? Others doesn't go in right here. If you don't have any...
Can I ask a quick clarification too? You said the disturbed area was 0.8...
Zero.
0.0.
0.0.
Yeah, less than 1/10 of an acre.
Yeah, you made those statements, and I just wanted to make sure we...
Thank you.
Thank you. So, not only is there further design and development required for water and sewer, but also grading drainage, and as just pointed out, architectural. I'll start with that. The project architects are detailing not only the addition that's proposed to the chapel, but also to the other condominium units, and redevelopment of the manor house, which is from lot number 1 right here. And so, associated with that, the previous plans that were submitted, I had done some detailed grading, and some preliminary drainage, and development, infrastructure for water and sewer. That's also going to be revised, because the, some detailing of the condominium units is taking place. So, that will be incorporated with the next application and full design package, that will go to the town for review and approval. So, in speaking to, the site grading, site grading will be detailed for not only the units, you know, the infrastructure to get there, the roadways. All, you know, design will be in such a way to conform with the environment, and to consider all the town environmental requirements, and also state regulatory requirements with regard to storm alarm. That'll certainly be a big component of the project. The site lends itself to that, with several wetland areas that Matthew mentioned, and we're going to utilize those wetland areas for recharge areas for stormwater. That still remains to be detailed, and will be part of subsequent applications to the town. With regard to water and sewer, because as I mentioned before, as I started the presentation of this project, so revision to the, you know, to the structure of the project itself, in other words, the development of this condominium units versus a country inn, a minor change to the water demand and wastewater generation. So, that, in the documents that were submitted, I revised the, you know, the estimates for both water supply and wastewater generation. And, that is under discussion with the Dutch County Department of Health with regard to a revision for flow confirmation letter, which is issued by the Health Department, that essentially where they confirm those values. And then, also, that information has been forwarded to the hydrogeologist on the project, where initial testing has been done, as I mentioned before in previous presentations to this board, to quantify the existing water supply that's on the site. And, now, it's, you know, based on the estimates for the demand for the project, some, an additional water supply needs to be investigated. And so, that will take place. We're in the process of doing that now, and that will include testing for quantity and quality on the site, and also, as we've always mentioned through this, for this project, the opportunity for, you know, monitoring of water supplies for joint properties. In other words, the neighbors' wells will also be included in this evaluation of the water supply. Waste water disposal, I should say that, I mean, the existing water supply infrastructure will also be expanded and improved throughout the entire site. It's a small water treatment plant on the site now. It will have, it will be enhanced, along with decision on to the type of development of the water system, for whether it's on-ground storage, or whether it's a hydromantic system. So, we're going through that evaluation right now. And it's, that'll also include, where George will get to, discussions with the Dutch County Water and Waste Water Authority. They certainly have some say in what's going to occur as far as improvements, improvements for both water supply and wastewater disposal. Waste water disposal, the last time I was here, mentioned that the project sponsor has engaged a consulting firm that specializes in wastewater treatment facilities. They've done a preliminary analysis of that. That information will be submitted to the, to the board in the forthcoming, in the next application. And then, we'll continue with that for submission to both the Dutch County Department of Health, and also New York State D E C for their review and approval. The discharge, the existing treatment facility is, it appears it's going to be adequate for what our needs are. Its design capacity is in excess of what is being proposed for the project, and so, as I said, those plans will be forthcoming also. D E C has also issued discharge standards for the outfall of the existing plant. That, that outfall is, it's actually identified, it's along Ackled Hook Road, it's right here. So, each treatment plant is here, and then the outfall, outfall is to, is located at a stream. So, in summary, those plans are under development now, and that will be submitted along with the application to the board for the board's review and consultants, and also regulatory agencies.
One quick question. Done, I didn't hear if you addressed this, Mark. The pressurization for the water supply is going to be done how?
We're evaluating that, whether it's some type of on-ground storage, or whether it'll be essentially a hydromantic system. So, it's being evaluated.
So, on-ground storage, that doesn't, that doesn't mean a storage tower, though?
Uh, you know, there's actually, so the water is being stored here, yeah. So, that's, that's one of the highest, that may be the highest point on the property.
And is that adequate for the pressure that is required for all?
No, it's not. It's not required. So, so, we're going through, actually, I've done all the preliminary work to put it into a network analysis, to take a look at how to do this. And, you know, because of the, you know, technology, technology has changed, that it may be, for example, it's just, the thing that we're looking at is just evaluating domestic supply for the, for the project. In other words, with condominium units, fire protection, I've mentioned this before, can be individual to each one of the units. So, it's only domestic supply that would need to be considered. And so, it may be through, you know, just a large storage tank, and through a hydro system with variable speed pumps. It's, it's, we're in the process of taking a look at what's the most effective way to do it, and also, we need to coordinate that with water and wastewater authority.
Okay, and the fire protection, you said it's going to be individual, those are going to be storage tanks that each individual unit, or?
You know, Eric, I don't know, because the, you know, the project architects have, you know, developed some type of suppression system for each one of the units, and they've been involved with that, so those details will follow.
Thank you.
I'm George Rodenhasen from Rodenhasen Shaw. I'm Paul Darrow. Just to update you on two issues. One is that the water and wastewater are still going to be owned and operated by the Dutch County Water and Waste Water Authority. And it's very important to the town to not be at risk that the town, in some way, be obligated to take on the system if the project fails, or if the community does not want to pay for itself, the system. So, we had negotiated an agreement with Dutch County Water and Waste Water. Even though there were three lots involved, there's still one system involved, and it's one water system, one wastewater system. The agreement provides simply that we will build a system to the Dutch County Water and Waste Water Authority, approval for their standards. So, as Mark mentioned, the authority is involved now reviewing our plans, and they will not accept the final product unless it complies with their standards, and they will quit all the plans. We then build the project, build the infrastructure, that is, the water and wastewater systems, in accordance with those plans, at our cost. And when they are complete, they'll be inspected by the authority, and if it's accepted by them, they will have to take ownership for free. They will then own the system, and pay for the operation of the system by charging the users, which will be the owners of 36 condominium units, in the same way that any other water district will charge its users. The district is formed by the county, is part of the county water district, or the county wastewater district, what's called the part of the county district, which is just a part of it, in this project, which will be part of the county overall water or wastewater district. So, all the regulations apply to county districts that we set by the county, and administer through the authority. So, essentially, at the time that this is, if the infrastructure is completed, it gets sold at no cost to the county, to the authority. And at that point, there's no residual liability to the town at all. I should say too, about the condominium association, since it's now one project, in the sense that there are now 36 condominium units, no more in, no separate structure. There's one condominium association, and 36 members will be members of that association. The owners of the condo units will be members of the association, or run the association themselves like any other condo association. The expense of the maintenance of the main building will be a shared expense to the condominium association. It'll be everyone's interest to keep the building in good shape. Of course, it will be restored initially, and adaptively rehabilitated by the owner today, by the developer. But once it's turned over to the condo association, they can maintain the building. Same is true of the chapel, which is also going to be adaptively reused. The only reason there are three lots is to comply with the state, I'm sorry, with the town's zoning laws, that require that to get the benefit of adaptive reuse of historic structure by putting residential use in it, you have to have a separate lot. And then, you can have four units per lot in those structures. So, we have the two lots separated off, so that we can adaptively reuse the mansion, and adaptively reuse the chapel for additional condominium units. But again, it's one condominium association, there's no differential between different owners, and it will be one water and wastewater system, two systems, one water system, one wastewater system throughout the whole development. Owned each by the Dutch County Water and Waste Water Authority, pursuant to separate agreements, in which we undertake to build and then sell to them for no cost. So, that's the legal structure at this point.
Any, anything else? Moment. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Mark. I think it's the lot, lot two, the little building there where the parking lot is, it looks like the, kind of like a little thing, but the parking spaces are on the opposite side, so that you would park your car, then walk across the road to the building. Couldn't that be reversed?
Depends on time of year. I was trying to take advantage of, you know, existing infrastructure that's there, so there's an existing road there. And so, I placed, I placed the parking across it. It's obviously not a high-volume roadway, so it's only for access for those units, but I'll consider that in the design.
I have some experience on that one. And the other thing, and I brought this up last time too, was the, the road, the main entrance coming in, and then they have to go all the way up, all the way down, yes. And it seems like, isn't there some way you could, I mean, I tried looking out on the map, if it would be shorter to come across, but it's new construction.
So...
The road.
Yeah, as opposed to the existing.
This is existing, I know.
It's just like we talked about the deposit deal.
So, Sharon, so we looked at, we did look at that. So, we looked at, you know, improvement of the existing access, the triangular access right here. So, right now, it's, so it's being used for emergency access only. Right? I forgot to mention that in my initial presentation. And so, I looked at an analysis in order to relocate that entrance, in order to have it for full-time access. And in order to do that, in order to achieve that with site distance, because this is the top of the hill right here, so you can just, so you can see to about right here, here. You can just see over the top of the hill, you can see the cars coming. You have to move this entrance to the south. And when you move that entrance to the south, Jim, if you could, when you move this to the south, because of this curve here, you have, in order to get the site distance, you have to cut all those trees down in order to do it. So, that was, so that was one alternative that I looked at.
Yeah, that I understood.
Second alternative was if you could, I mean, you know, and I've looked at, we've looked at other alternatives, rather than, you know, utilizing this, you know, could, if you had, if you had access here at the top of the hill, right? Could you have adequate site distance this way and this way? However, this is a big hill, and it drops down, it's quite a bit of change in geography, all tree area through there, you know, wetlands. Looked at that, the disturbance to do that was just, it, you know, it wasn't respectful of the property. So, that, you know, that alternative was also considered. So, we're back to, you know, just looking at, going back to the north entrance and coming in, and, you know, utilizing, utilizing the, well, obviously modifying it, because it comes in at an angle. So, it made it a perpendicular access, so you'd have site distance in both directions. And then, utilizing the existing driveway that's there to try to, you know, to, you know, to avoid, you know, additional disturbance to the property. So, that's, that's the rationale. That's how, that's how it's been developed.
And the other thing, like, it was in the notes too, was those, those two hammerhead parking lots, they were a little...
So, here, which ones? So here, which ones, Sharon?
There's one in building seven, and, oh, one of between four and five.
Right, and so those, you have to actually go to the, so they're not detailed in this, in this submission that I made. I only submitted, made a submission for the first two sheets. The previous submission, I had ten sheets. So in those ten sheets were included, I had developed site grading and drainage for the entire site along with infrastructure for water and sewer. So those two areas were developed for, in this case, for wastewater disposal. Because of their location, because they're low, need to put pump stations in there in order to pump the wastewater to an adequate spot where we can gravity feed it into the, into the sewage stream, into the gravity system to go to sewage stream. So they're mere, those are mere, those are, that's for infrastructure, for the two spots.
Mark, what are the two buildings? The manor house is one, what's the other building that's going to be adapted in the stone project?
Okay, thanks.
And the dormitory is going to be not used?
The dormitory is, what's the?
Property maintenance, possibly tenant storage, but it's going to really be determined as a result of going to schematic design.
Okay.
Because we also have the manor house, and what do they, that building is bigger than the four units, so we have space that we have to allocate to other uses.
I didn't quite follow that one, so.
That could be uses, there could be uses in the manor house as well, in addition to the four units that are for the property. So between the, between the existing dormitory building and say the basement of the manor house, there'll be some utilization of space for supportive services as a logic.
Perfect.
Any questions? Can we use the board? Okay, I'd like to open it to the public, but I'd ask is you come up to the microphone and identify who you want to, I know you are, thank you. And.
Hi, Brendan Coffey, Anna Coffey, 505 Active Road, that's my stream that the wastewater dumps into today. Couple of questions. First and foremost, there's a security, the stone project, you've listed it as being a security building. What's, what's security required for on the site? Does anybody know?
What is security?
I thought I was looking up here, it says security gatehouse. Is that just heritage? It's just a gatehouse today, and you would be using a security gatehouse coming for it?
Just a gatehouse, I mean, I don't think we have a program to use for it, it would be for the condominium association, and how that would be.
Okay, so there's no security building, per se, which is misleading. So, the real concern that I have, and probably some of my neighbors have, is the wastewater. Today it's dumping into the stream, we're trusting that the county is doing the right thing by it. I will tell you, as you walk down Active Road, past that, whatever word used for, where it flows into the stream, yeah, through no fault of view or your plans, it's exposed. So you're walking through this quiet woodland area, and you see this giant concrete thing with a PVC tube dumping into the stream. So I would love to see that addressed as part of this plan. It should not be exposed, there's probably ways to engineer that, so you just have the tube going into the stream, it would go along with the aesthetics you're trying to retain there. The second comment is the dormitories. Doesn't show up on these charts, but these things are quite ugly. They're wood grained, stupid ass shingle on them. I would love to see it taken down, but I know you're going to repurpose them, so ideally you repurpose them and it blends in with the structure of the stone buildings, they're quite attractive. And the same combo would go to the extension and doing to the stone barn, again, visible from the street, the stone barn would be pretty attractive to look at, and we hope that the design would take into account the aesthetics of that extension as well. I think that's the only questions I have. Thank you. By the way, I'm a strong supporter of this project, I really am, I just want to make sure we, like we all do, we do it right.
I'm assuming the relevant elevations of the.
That's what I'm saying.
And while also exterior work.
Exterior, right.
Because his comment on reference of his aesthetic appeal, I think is quite accurate.
That'll be the next submission.
Okay, thank you. Next.
I have a thumb drive which has a little.
This is going to be good.
My name is Gary Lockman, I live at twenty hundred Hill Road, we are an adjoining landowner of Rockledge on the northwest side of the Rockledge property. I want to talk about the need for the planning board to impose restrictions on short-term rentals. The elimination of the inn, though certainly welcome, doesn't reduce the importance of this question. Mr. Blakeman sees this project as a high-end owner-occupied residential development used primarily for weekends and vacations. We are asking the planning board to make sure that this will be the actual use of the condominiums. Mr. Blakeman is an experienced developer of hotels. Rockledge would have a lot to offer as a hotel resort, gorgeous setting, luxurious accommodations, attractive amenities, and a current shortage of accommodations for transient visitors to the right back area. Intentions notwithstanding, without externally imposed restrictions, there would be no obstacle to marketing the condos as investor properties or on a multiple ownership basis. Discuss the previous meetings, the resulting large transient population would diminish the character of the rural residential neighborhood in the area. Short-term rentals are already an issue in the town, largely due to Airbnb. They're not included in the table of permitted uses and are therefore a violation of the zoning law, but currently they're sprinkled around the town and don't yet have a significant impact on entire neighborhoods. Rockledge offers the possibility of concentrating a prohibited use. It could be argued that it would be sufficient to restrict short-term rentals in condo bylaws or in the condo declaration, but in the long run, condo association can undo just about any restrictions imposed in this way, especially if there's pressure from investor owners who are interested primarily in income generation. If the town has had any assurance that Rockledge does not develop into a resort, these restrictions need to be established by the town as conditions in the special permit, together with a viable enforcement mechanism. The planning board was clearly given the authority to impose such conditions in Article Six, Section 12565D of the Rhinebeck zoning law. These conditions should specify prohibited activities, what counts as evidence of prohibited activities, remedies for violation, and how all the foregoing is going to be documented. They should be designed to give the condo association itself both the means and the incentive for self-policing its owners, so that violations are remedied with little or no involvement by the town. Okay, we advance this slide. Here are my suggestions for the substance of what those conditions ought to say. One, special permit must be renewed in three years. Right now, the Rockledge development exists entirely on paper. Three years from now, the project will have reality, and it seems to me reasonable to give the town the opportunity to revisit the terms of the special permit in light of what has actually happened on the ground in this development. Two, no condo may be sold on a plan hearing basis or owned by more than one family, as defined in the zoning law. That's one. Three, no condo may be rented without a written lease with a term of at least six, without a written lease with a term of at least six months approved by the condo association. Evidence of soliciting short-term rentals in any public media, weed, Airbnb, or an affidavit from an individual who has rented a condo short-term will be regarded as evidence of violation. Four, any violation of number two or three is grounds for revoking or failing to renew the special permit and for revoking the CMO for any unit in violation. No organized events attended by significant numbers of non-residents at this wedding may be held on condo property. Six, if the town incurs legal expenses in enforcement and the town wins, they will be borne by the condo association, so skinning the game of the association. And, number seven, conditions number two through six must be placed in the chain of titles as a declaration of restrictions forcible by the town and adjoining landowners and referenced in all future needs and in the condominium declaration. So there's no possible excuse for any buyer saying, "I didn't know." Any normal title search would disclose all this, it will be in the condo declaration, it will be all over the place. These conditions are very similar to those contained in a letter from Alan Rappelier to the planning board dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, which also established that the imposition of conditions by the planning board is consistent with the Rhinebeck zoning law and with applicable case law. We believe that the imposition of these restrictions will ensure that the purchasers of the condo units in the Rockledge development will have a vested interest in long-term compatibility of the development with its surrounding neighborhood. Restrictions on short-term rentals merely prohibit what is already prohibited by the zoning law. All of them are completely in keeping with Mr. Blakeman's stated intentions for Rockledge. Rather than being an impediment to sales, we believe they will actually make the development more attractive to the kind of buyer Mr. Blakeman has said he desires. So thanks for your attention.
I wonder if this project fails or fails to be completed, the town and the neighborhood will inherit three bizarrely shaped lots that will be extremely difficult to be purchased. And I'd like to ask you, if you don't mind, to outline with your finger or with a pointer what the lots look like, that everyone here should understand what, how they're shaped, how they're configured, and ask themselves if they've ever seen a lot like any of these in the town of Rhinebeck, anyway. Because with, it's going to be not only impossible to repurpose these lots, once the subdivision is made, but furthermore, it's going to be very easy for each new owner or whatever purpose these lots are put to, to commit trespasses inadvertently by, it's a kind of legal landmine waiting to happen. But if you don't mind, if you do the one thing that you should have done to begin with, the color each lot, so everyone can see it for transparency. Why don't you sneak, if you put it on, sneak it out back, so that they actually, you know.
He was watching, he was always asking you to.
Say, I'm going to show you lot one, and then move on to the other.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, anyone could do it, I'd like to see them.
The only reason the lots are on there is because the zoning law requires that for adaptive reuse from the certain structure, you have to have a separate lot, and you can put four units on that lot, and it has to be five acres because it's zoning. That's what they are, five acres of lots. Each lot is five acres.
It was planned this for fools.
It's not foolish, that's what the zoning requires, and in fact, they can be changed by the next owner, if there's no use.
All lots are, I mean, maintained by the same owner also?
They're owned by the same entity.
Entity, okay, both owner and.
So there's no trespass, you can walk anywhere.
So, and, and none of them can be sold separately, is that true or not true?
Yes, true, right.
They can be sold separately, because they're separate lots. The trespass that I mentioned is a future proposition, not a current one. So they're, they are separate lots, and the robust of the fact that they're being proposed as under single ownership now, doesn't mean anything about the future, each of them can be sold, or we'll have empty lots of bizarre shapes that no one will ever know what to do with, which might not be a bad thing altogether, except the, the one proposition here that was attractive to all of us, the renovation of a historic property, then is lost for eternity, because you have a manor house, a grand house of Newport proportions on a five-point-oh-three-four lake acre lot. That's absurd. Let me say something else. Our attorney thread mentions again and again, the Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority, and often refers to it as the authority. You get the idea, that must be a government organization that's helping out this project. It is not. It is a private enterprise and not one with a very good record at that, so keep that in mind as well. That's sales talk. Next, the word vacation home, so far as I know, the term vacation home has no standing in any of the regulations of the town of Rhinebeck. I would ask that we try to avoid it, it just sounds like obfuscation. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Strickstein, one toward the right, we're adjacent on the west side of the project. So some questions are addressed to the developers as well as to the board. The papers indicate that the project's going to go forward in two phases, to be determined, with no commencement and no completion dates yet. So my question to the board is, is that schedule subject to the planning board approval?
Yes, it would be approved, and it would not at the point yet where we're, we'd be kind of lazy to start.
You know, like all of our neighbors, very concerned about water usage and wastewater disposal. Mark, characterize, I didn't quite understand your comment, you could be, you stopped here. You said something about an analysis, first of all, it's fair to characterize that substantial detail of the water supply and wastewater treatment has yet to be presented.
That's correct.
It's just a general idea right now, but the details we've not received.
Well, so the previous submission with the country end, so the plans detailed preliminary infrastructure, but specific design has not been presented to the board yet.
Okay, but you did characterize in your comments just something about an analysis of the, in terms of the, I'm concerned mainly about the aquifer and our supply as well there, and you said something about an analysis of the neighboring as well, is it?
Could you please be clear that? So, as part of the hydrogeologic study, so there's, there's three existing wells located on the property now. So here is, yeah, right here, there are two wells right here, and then there's, there's another well located here, and then there's actually, there was a fourth well, that was drilled right near the storage facility, that's, that's to be abandoned. There's two production wells, and then the third well, that would also be brought into An initial hydrogeologic analysis has been done on the property, and that was to evaluate the source capacity that exists now on those three wells. And those wells were pump tested in order to do that. Based on the estimated demand that is, that I prepared for the entire site, water demand and wastewater generation rate, and those estimates are based on values that have been developed by the State Health Department in New York State, D.C. And other requirements as, when developing a public water supply, it's required that at least one additional well needs to be developed for the project. And so the hydro, the hydrogeologists have identified various sites on the property that would, that would, that warrant investigation. warrant investigation for an additional water supply. So, so the next step is to take, is to actually go ahead and advance a well in that location, determine its yield if adequate, then do pump testing for all four wells on the property, and also monitor the wells for adjoining properties at the same time, to see if there is any effect from withdrawal of water from this site on adjoining properties.
That's going right, sucking up the water.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so that, that is, that's part of the, that's part of the analysis that will take place with regard to source capacity, like water supply for the project.
Okay, so that's down with my guess. In your papers, you kind of use the figure of 14,716 gallons per day for freshwater plus an amount for irrigation purposes, brings it up to 18,000. But it actually, there's conflicting numbers in the documents where you sometimes just, you don't need the 18,000, you only use the 14,000 number.
So it's, so it's water demand and wastewater generation, right?
Right, but the water demand, you're saying is, in one place you say it's 18,561, in another place you say it's 14,716, shouldn't that include the irrigation?
It does, because, so I, I've separated potable water, well, it's all potable water, but, but, right, because there's realistically, so the irrigation, irrigation number was developed through, reached out to the project landscaping department, and for, you know, for vegetation near the condominium units, estimates were provided during drug time of the year and, you know, various times of the year. So it took a look at the most stringent requirement and included that in the overall water demand for the project. So that's, so that's water, that's, that's water demand. And so that, that was included, and it was included as part of the potable water, because realistically, we wouldn't set up, wouldn't have separate wells for irrigation for the plantings, we would just use the central water system that's being developed. So that's water demand. However, where the difference is in the numbers, wastewater generation doesn't include, doesn't include that number.
Right, I'm saying you actually use this 14,000 number as a waste of the demand.
That's wastewater generation, right? So that's...
No, as, as potable, as freshwater.
I'll, I'll review that, yeah, I'll take a look at, but the intent was to, is to include both water supply for the condominium units and irrigation.
Is there going to be, the papers, I think say that there's going to be no attempt to capture or recycle liquid waste, is that, is that, I wasn't quite sure, but that, I'm just quoting the papers, I don't quite understand what that is referring to.
That maybe you mean, is that part of the EAF, the environmental assessment form?
No, apparently, it's in the initial application, the pages of the form.
So it might be in the environmental assessment form, in the initial application. And so, so that just, that speaks to, is that, that sectioned in the...
I have to level the top and go down there.
So is here, all wastewater is being treated through a wastewater treatment plant and then discharged?
Into the streams.
Into the stream, into the stream.
Okay, I'll detail where I see this conflict, give to you, so they can get it to you.
Great, thank you.
Couple other questions. Can you characterize, explain to me, you described lighting fixtures as in dark sky with granite and directing downward, this is something particular concern to me, because I faced this with hardwoods, and I'm wondering what it's going to look like, it's huge.
So part of the, and so part of the next submission package will include, and will include lighting, you know, landscaping and lighting details as required by the town.
Okay, so then answer to this question. Last question, you characterize eight point seven acres of hardwoods that are going to be disturbed, and can you kind of just indicate where that is part of our, we'll have this diagram.
So, so that was, and so that number was developed, so the, the previous submission, when I referenced it, 10 drawings, so in those 10 drawings, I, I developed a grading plan for the entire site. And so that, that disturbance number was developed when, when taking a look at, you know, the areas that require regrading and development, you know, for, for all the units. So, you know, you see this footprint here, well, like, you know, it's a pretty good slope down through here, so I know it grades down through here, so, so the wooded area, this, this, you know, is through here, there'll be some, you know, areas around the units, all, if you take a look at those plans, it shows where all the regrading takes place. Those are essentially the areas to be, that are, the additional areas to be disturbed.
Okay, thank you, thank you. One quick follow-up on, on what you said, if you do that well test and you find out that the drawdown on neighboring wells is excessive, though, do you have a plan B?
The, that's why we have, we have hydrogeology on the project, so I'm sure it'll be, that's, you know, that'll be considered as part of the analysis.
On that, on that point, you have to say wells, one thing that should be made clear is that when you do off-site wells, obviously it's voluntary on the part of the off-site well owners, and that we will be requesting participation by neighboring property owners to give us access to their wells to perform the pump test, and that would be the only way to determine whether the drawdown on this project would have impact on off-site wells. So we'll be asking for off-site owner participation in that work.
Well, that's very, a whole bunch there, anywhere from 200, 600 feet.
Courtney Leah Gallo, AgroHawk Road, just a couple points of clarification. At a previous meeting, we were using the south entrance, we had talked to Barry Gerard with the highway department, we were enlarging that entrance for visibility, now we're going to the north entrance. North entrance had originally been for fire and emergency vehicles, are we doing...
No, it's actually the other way around. This has always been the main access, this is for car vehicles, always.
All right, so are we doing away with the south entrance, or still keeping that for fire?
This is for emergency access, it stays.
And then you said that the four units in the manor house were not going to take up, what approximate size are those square footage, are you planning for those units?
That's in the next submission coming in this month, next month.
Do we as a community get to see the condo docs that they are proposing, or is that out of the realm of the planning board?
You mean all the papers that they're going to be submitting in terms of elevations and design and whatnot?
No, the condo documents that...
To go up to the state?
The condo docs are the regulations of the condo, what they can do, can they paint their door red, can they, you know, have parties in the gatehouse, my next point. Do we get to see them?
I don't see why not.
Ordinarily, we ask for drafts to those who go in, so we do get a look at those. There's a few other documents.
Okay, and to be included in that, the use of the gatehouse, since it does not seem to have a purpose at this point, we don't want it to become a pseudo manor house with a commercial kitchen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm David Weiner, I live at Trios 6 in Acro Hook Road, which is north of this project, and I'd like to address some traffic issues. I submitted a letter to you, I think that, I think it was January 3rd, which I'm going to have to update. I do have a quick question, is the Creighton Manning report that I gave stated November 3rd, is there one since then?
No, November 30th reflects the 36 condominium.
Okay, so that, and the assumption is there's a generation of 30 trips during the peak hour, I think, okay, so it's that report. When I look at those numbers, and I, by the way, I think this is a very poor project, and the only thing that disturbs me is the traffic. I live kind of close to the road, and I see a lot of people going by, and that road is used for a lot of purposes other than vehicles, and the traffic study doesn't address the use of the road for non-vehicular use, people, pedestrians, walking pets, jogging, bicyclists, people on bike tours usually go by.
Horses, horses.
Yeah, horses, forgot about the horses. And sometimes I even see kids driving into the road at wind starts. So, so I think that's, that's the current nature of the community that I'd like to see maintained, and I'd like to be assured that this project has improved that, and when I look at the, it's not just the character of the neighborhood, it's also safety. And I believe that with the potential traffic is actually a safety hazard, given the fact that the road is nearing error. Now, the traffic study indicates, if you look at Acro Hook Road, and I refer to this in my, my letter to you, under current existing conditions, they're showing 250 what they call daily segment barriers. And that's going to increase to 550 on Acro Hook Road north of the development. Well, that's more than doubling the traffic, and that's on the assumption that this is a recreational kind of homes, in other words, homes that are not a primary residence. So I, I looked at the numbers, and based on the number of trips during the peak hours, really a two-hour period, there would be probably one, it would, the assumption is, looks like it would be one car to 83% of the 36 units within that period of time. Well, what if these are residences that are more likely to be primary? If we just stress test it a little, that number's going to double. So now, instead of two and a half times the traffic that we normally get, we're now getting five times. On a road that has a 35 mile an hour speed limit, where people often was by around 40 miles an hour. So let's think about the bikers, the joggers, old guys like me walking on those roads, sometimes after sunset. I, I think that needs to be taken into, into consideration. I, it's, it's great that these buildings are going to be adaptively reused, but this is all private property, and most of, a lot of these buildings, I can't even go look at, I can't even walk my dump bike, yet all the traffic is going to go right by my house, so I think we need to take that into consideration. So I kind of did some math, and I picked up a couple of the wrong numbers, and I'll correct my numbers, but the situation actually gets worse. Right now, during peak period, if I take my old dog with my old body for a 15-minute walk, I can expect two or three cars to go by, sometimes whizzing by 40 miles an hour. Under the developer's proposal, it would be maybe six. If it's a primarily residential area, that's likely to go up to 10, and it's not just going to be on Friday. So I, I think we really have to look at the traffic number. The other thing is the assumption seems to be that the traffic's coming from the north, which doesn't make sense. And typically, I find vacationers here seem to come from the south, from the city. So then we look here, we're looking at sightlines at the Acro Hook extension, that's an acute That, I, I think that creates some difficulty, so either, and I know there are issues with wetlands, either if it's in an entrance here, which, which, which creates an entrance to a highway off of that road that's, what I just pointed to, the internal road, or, and it's a question of who has the authority to do this, that there need to be adjustments on the road. The speed limit on Acro Hook Road in this area needs to be reduced between Y Road and, and at least Primrose Hill Road to somewhere like 25 miles an hour. Particularly, there are some pinch points here where if there are two cars coming at once, there's no place for a pedestrian to go. And then all of that needs to be looked at, there need to be stop signs, people tend to get lost in the area, so especially if they're vacationers, there needs to be better signings, and I've listed all that, and I don't want to bore you to go through this, but I, I, the assumption that these are going to be not primary residences, I think is not supported by the actual use of properties in the area, and I think you need to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. You did make a number of comments, and I think I'd like to have them discussed with our highway superintendent, because that could be his town road, which would just need a bit more authority on what can happen there than, say, a little state or company.
I copied him on my, and I, I picked the wrong number, obviously important, I'll create it next later.
We are going to ask to speak to you about his, you know, looking at that and seeing what he thinks and what he can suggest.
I'm Carol Hewell from 27 Acro Hook Road. Sorry. Two quick questions, actually, that have come up from these other comments. In the mansion, it was mentioned that there is space that's not taken up by the proposed units. Is there common space in the mansions available to the condo users, and is there a kitchen in that area?
I just say, yeah, we're doing the floor plans for the next meeting, although we don't have it yet, and there's still any discussions to attack what the use is for, but just considering it being owned by the condo association, so if there's common space, the condo association may have some uses to do it or not, but put that on our floor plans, so you'll see it.
And I just want to say, I, I'm too sort of intrigued by the idea of having access road from Rose Hill. I know that Carol Lee, who I don't think is here tonight, has also written letters to that, to that effect. I think it would be a nice way of dispersing the traffic amongst the four inroads to that, to that area. So the remarks I had prepared are just that, let's see, John Hughes and I bought our house in 2011, so we've been in the area for a while, Daytop has been inactive the entire time that we own our property. So whether or not it's permissible, we feel that I have 36 new homes to Acro Hook, and one in Felswood is not in keeping with the vision of the 2009 comprehensive plan, which among other things seeks to preserve Rhinebeck's rural scenic, rural and scenic roads, which Acro Hook is one. The sudden tripling of local density, rock ledge would affect, brings with three practical concerns in particular, the impact of increased traffic, increased use of groundwater, and the emptying of treated wastewater in Fallsford Creek, and I know a lot of this has been touched on, so I'll keep it brief. I'm not sure, I was looking at the most recently Creighton Manning report, so forgive me if these numbers aren't correct, but the one submitted April 5th, 2017 identifies traffic on Acro Hook Road as excellent, according to the residential road volume thresholds. That means that less than 300 vehicles per day, that's one of the reasons we live here, and we'd like to keep it that way. We're not voting for good, we'd like to keep it excellent. They calculate the current traffic on the main part of Acro Hook Road north of Primrose Hill as 214 vehicles per day. Current calculations for additional traffic due to the rock ledge homes are based on recreational use, which appears to be half that of multifamily use. Unless there's some stipulation in the condo bylaws that forbids occupancy during the week, it would be more informative to have the revised absolute numbers for comparison based on multifamily use. As the water and wastewater issues are inextricably linked, I would like to propose that the rock ledge team make a public presentation that explains in detail the water needs of the complex, how they're going to be met, the potential impact on the private wells in the area, and I know you've given a lot of transparency on kind of what to expect on that front, which we really appreciate. And the quality of effluent released into Fallsford Creek in plain terms, so in addition to the... So in addition to the scientific terms, you know, can kids play in it? Can the animals drink it? Can water my garden with it? You know, what's the quality of the water? And then I understand too, that you, I understand that you plan to make the drawings very energy efficient. And, and I, and really believe that you're trying to do the best to preserve the natural habitat of the property, and you guys talked a lot about that today. But can you explain why you're not electing cat water from the store water or utilize the gray water for potentially appropriate uses, particularly irrigation? Seems like a logical way to shave $3,000, $3,000 gallons a day off your water usage. And then finally, the wastewater, this is fairly personal to us because we live just opposite Primrose Hill Plant. But it emits a constant hum in spite of the fact that it's currently minimally active. I know you've anticipated additional screening of the surrounding areas with plantings. I'd like to raise the possibility of continuing the berm that currently, that exists covering part of it along the west side of Acro Hook Road. If you were to continue that northward, that might help contain the noise even further and it could be an efficient use of some of the materials excavated in the construction and the new, the new dwellings.
Thank you. Anyone else to see me? Anyone have your orders available?
Quick question for Mark. Is there any physical or geological feature that would preclude putting a driveway onto Primrose Hill?
So I actually looked at it when I said that we had investigated Acro Hook Road. I forgot to mention that we too took a look at access to Hagerty Hill Road. And so Hagerty Hill Road is a county road, excuse me, Primrose Hill Road is a county road. Hagerty Hill Road is right here now. So right at this intersection, there's no traffic control at this intersection. If you're heading west, Primrose Hill Road, you could just go straight through right here. There's no stop sign required. You could just continue right through. And so being a county road, there are, there are certain sightline requirements that the county has, and, and those sightline requirements were imposed on these access points right here. This, you can see there's curves here. There's also vertical changes in alignment along this road. Wetlands, okay, it has, this is actually a state wetland through here. So the only, the only place that actually looked to, to access was, was coming through here. And then you had, you actually have two wetland areas here that would be interrupted with access through here. But in order to do this, you have to change this entire intersection in order to do it, right? And so you have to create, you have to create traffic control so you can control what vehicles coming in and then having to turn or stop going onto Hagerty Hill Road. And then also you have to allow for, through traffic through Primrose Hill. Did extensive, I actually have drawings. I did extensive analysis through here. In doing that, you still can't get adequate sight distance along, along Primrose Hill Road due to this curve. And due, and there's actually, there's actually, due to the horizontal curve and also the vertical curve. I can present that information through here. Stay wetland, uh, no sight distance.
No sight distance.
No sight distance. Just drops down as it, right? No sight distance.
Could I comment on that? Absolutely.
So it's 45 mile an hour speed.
Yeah, right. David Weiner again. The issue though is with the sightlines, and I understand you're, you're dealing with regulations that exist and maybe we're just getting wound up in bureaucracy. But if I'm right, and the traffic's going to come from the south, there are going to be people making all kinds of turns at a, an acute angle here at, at the Acro Hook extension where there's no sideline at all. So, you know, it would make more sense to put in a traffic signal there. I mean, is that impossible to do because we're in different silos? Secondly, the, the traffic, I think, is going to be coming from the south. So if you have the entrance in the south, then you don't have it going all, all the way around. That wouldn't necessarily be the only entrance, but at least a main entrance. So that, that's exactly the point because you have to look at the sightlines, not just in the entrances, but, but in the, on the roads.
Let's be clear, we do not want a traffic law. Second point, and I'm sure he's discovered this in analysis, that, that road that approaches going west, it goes up and then it goes down. Today, if I'm coming up from Hagerty Hill, I'm looking at that hill to see if somebody's coming over that. And just going straight onto that road is always a dicey situation. So I can appreciate how you couldn't create a right angle entry to that area. I get it. I would also comment that the traffic that we're expecting from New York City isn't going to come from Route 9. It's going to come from Conic Parkway and come in from the east, and it's going to ripple right down Acro Hook Road and avoid that extension circle. So the downside is we're getting a lot more traffic coming by my house, by your house, and then going up the hill and turning onto the property. That's the nature of the beast.
Thank you.
Mark, question on your estimate for irrigation water. 3,845 gallons. Where did that number come from and what acreage are you assuming is subject to irrigation?
So as I mentioned, that number came from a landscape architect.
Where did he get it?
It's a woman that, they, they developed it.
They have their own way of getting it.
My coagulation's coming.
So those, those are historical values that they developed. Oh, certainly, I, I thought I, on the, on my table, I thought I included the basis of those numbers on the table.
The most recent application contained the number and referred to an appendix B, which wasn't anyplace in the application. So the only spreadsheet that I've seen was an estimate of water usage for domestic use but contained no information at all about irrigation. What surprises me is that most of us that irrigate are accustomed to an irrigation number that's a multiple of domestic use, not a fraction. 3,845 gallons of water will put just over one eighth of an inch on an acre of land. Now with all the landscaping that was being talked about around all these units, you know, spread among 36 units, that isn't very, an acre of land is probably an underestimate of how much water is going to be required. And you can't irrigate with an eighth of an inch of water. You need close to half an inch.
So I'll provide, I'll have the landscape architect provide the background information on that.
Okay, and it, it should be peak usage, not an annual average. You cannot pump more in July because you pump less in January. This is what is going to become a, for, for rock ledge, it's going to become a constraint on pumping capacity. For the rest of it, it's going to be a question over a long term, how much are you going to be taking out of the aquifer? But when everybody shows up on a weekend and it's August and it hasn't rained for four weeks, and everybody is out there with their garden hoses, et cetera, et cetera, the issue is going to be how much can you pump out between 8 o'clock in the morning and 6 o'clock at night out of your well and your, and your pumps? And that's the kind of analysis that I think the planning board and the neighbors are going to want to see.
Robert. Very soon again, Troy Gerard. Just continuing addressing the idea of an entrance of Hagerty Hill or Primrose. I find Hagerty Hill to be one of the more dangerous roads in all of Ryan Beck. I don't know how often it gets reported, but I hear the crashing into the tree on a regular basis as they come around the second curve. So to encourage movement of traffic onto Hagerty Hill, which putting an entrance there would do, I think would be a very dangerous movement. I'd like the board to seriously consider that. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak to? I feel we've got a lot. Continue this public hearing.
Two things. John, Acton 321, Primrose Hill Road. This is our property right here, and these are the wetlands in between. And I know Matt has been here, they've done studies there. I couldn't tell you all what they found, but I was surprised myself what they found in the wetlands. And also not to beat a dead horse, but this, we go through here all the time and it's, it's dangerous enough as it is. The other part was I was concerned about septic in water, but that's already been covered. And I'm glad to know that I heard here tonight that, that we're going to be notified about, you know, when they do this, the testing for our well, because our well is, is on this side, this closer part of the diagram there. And I would welcome that. My only thought is what happens two or three years down the line? This gentleman said, "At peak hours in August and it's been dry, and all of a sudden my well goes down after two or three years." You know, then what? Is this back to Duchess County, et cetera, et cetera? In terms of trying to, you know, have to re-drill it, do whatever? That, that's my personal part. Last but not least, this microphone works well. But I would have to say, Mr. Trumble, yours is, does not work well at all. And I don't know whether that's just tonight, but I do encourage all members that are on the board to please use the microphone. You know, you pretty much can speak without the microphone. If that's the case, we probably should just collect them and take them away. But even in the beginning, when you were speaking, it was very hard to hear. And I was sitting in the front row.
Do let me know because, you know, up here I don't know.
Yeah, and I don't know whether the speakers need to be up or whatever. It's just, just, just a point of reference.
I think we need you a little bit. It was set up by a different person tonight, and normally does do it. I'm not quite sure how they did it.
Mike, I'd like to make just one suggestion. You might want to encourage the applicant to look at, for irrigation purposes, using potentially rainwater, something like that, as an alternative to using well water.
Can we make a motion to continue the public hearing?
At 7:05?
Have we done the next one?
Have we done the next one? Yeah. It's actually the last letter. How did you say?
Did you say 7:05? We're joking. No, actually, we deliberately do it so that suppose they didn't show up for some reason or another, then you only have to wait five minutes to hear what's saying. What's that? I thought you said 5:50. Well, we could do that too.
February 4th.
Michael, I think we need more time to have, you know, sufficient materials for the board to, to review.
February 18th, 19th?
I think March meeting would be more appropriate.
Okay, how about March 4th is our first meeting. It's our only meeting March scheduled at this point. And the closing date for it will be February 18th for business submissions.
Okay.
March 4th?
Yes, please.
7:00.
7:00?
Yes, please.
It'll be late.
Can you get it earlier? Yes, sir.
If you do it earlier, we're going to have more procedural things to try and get out of the way at that time. So that 7:00, that is probably the best we can do. So then we all want to do this.
Take the test schedule in the audience and then the other go over and then. So if we have these that way, it's very, very efficient.
Do you want to do it? 6:45? Okay. I'd like a motion to continue this public hearing from March 4th at 6:45. Call in favor? Very good. Thank you all very much tonight.